The February twenty first, twenty twenty-three city council meeting is hereby called to order. And I will ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, to please call the road.
Ms. White Boyd.
Here.
Mr. Volsen.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Mr. Pretty.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
Here, and of course, Mr. President. Let me welcome everybody to our first session of the day. We have another session tonight at seven o'clock. But welcome. I want you to know that today's council session, or meetings, will be recorded and replayed on RV TV Channel Three on Thursdays at seven o'clock PM and Saturdays from ten AM to five o'clock PM. And video stream through Facebook Live at facebook.com/RuinoVA. And council meetings are offered with closed caption for the deaf and hard of hearing. All right. The invocation today will be delivered, and I feel the same, will be delivered by Reverend Jeff Wilson, pastor, okay, of Huntingdon Court United Methodist Church. And following Pastor Wilson, I will lead you in the prayer of allegiance. Please stand as.
Let's pray. Gracious God, we do come before you today. And we consider first and foremost the world that we are called to be a part of. We think of those in the midst of war in Ukraine, and we pray for peace. We think about those that are in Turkey, in Syria, that have been in the midst of natural disasters, and we pray for peace for their hearts. Our hearts break when we consider those that have lost so many loved ones. Our minds can't fathom them. So we just ask that you be with the families that are left questioning. We ask that you be with the relief workers and give them strength. We ask that you be with the governments that make the decisions revolving how to react. We ask that we all, in these moments, focus on the lives, those that are left behind, as well as those that are lost. Gracious God, we come, and we give you thanks for the valley that you've called us to be a part of, where we live and we work. We thank you for this place that sadly, God, we so often take for granted, but many come to travel to see. God, we're about at the doorstep of spring, and we know this place is going to be budding with life soon, but this is a place that you've called us to be a part of. So, God, in this time and this place, we ask that you be with our city council, and we ask that you allow them to make the best decisions that bring you glory. We ask that you give them the strength to make the hard decisions, and we ask those that come to share today to have peace on their hearts. Through it all, God, we ask that you help us to focus on you and your love. We pray this through your son. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor Wilson. And again, let me welcome everyone to our afternoon session. The Council of City of Roanoke is seeking applications for various vacancies on council-appointed authorities, boards, commissions, and committees. Please access the city's website at www.roanokeva.gov to complete an online application. And let me say, this council is always seeking those citizens who want to come forward and serve on a board or commission. We welcome your support, and we need you for that. So, and to fill out an application, very easy. You can contact the clerk's office and do it online, so it's not that complex. So we look forward to you all helping us to fill out some of our boards and commissions. All right. The expiration of three-year terms of office of Elizabeth C.S. Jamison and Natasha N. Saunders as trustees of the Roanoke City School Board ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Information pertaining to the school board process and application for appointment are also available on the city's website and in the city's clerk's office. Deadline for the receipt of an application is Friday, March tenth. And let me repeat that. The deadline is Friday, March tenth, twenty twenty-three, at five o'clock PM. So you still have time. But I say that with a lot of emphasis on it because oftentimes, we get people who put them in at, on the deadline at four fifty-nine, or sometimes five oh-one, and then they got to negotiate, should we receive them or not. So really, that's why it's so important. If you're interested in serving, please do that, and the process is very easy to do. All right. I'm going to bring that down to item number two, where we're going to recognize some of our valued employees, and I'm going to ask Councilmember Peter Volsen to join me at the podium. You know, you've heard it said, and we say it often, and we, as a council, believe that, that our most valuable assets are employees. And we want to take this time to recognize them and want them to come up, those that are here. Peter, you could step over here, and Deputy Clerk Will hand you the awards. All right. We're going to recognize city employees with thirty, thirty-five, forty, forty-five, and fifty years of service. For fifty years of service, we want to recognize Lawrence Taylor. Lawrence has retired from Fleet Management, and I'm going to read the inscription on his award. Lawrence Taylor, the City of Roanoke Maintenance Supervisor, a dedicated and valuable public servant for approximately fifty years in the Division of Fleet Management, presented by the mayor and members of the Roanoke City Council on today, February the twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Let's give Lawrence a hand. All right. Lawrence?
Uh-oh.
I wanted to make sure that it was you. You were going out the door. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hey, we had a long day.
Good to see you.
Listen, I want you to stay up here, if you stay up, because I want the council to have something to say to everybody. So, thank you. All right? All right. Our next award is a forty-five-year award to the Honorable Don S. Cartwell, Commonwealth Attorney.
Well, Commonwealth Attorney did it.
But let's give Don a hand for forty-five years. All right. I'm going to present a key to the city to the following recipient. Forty-five years of service, Marvin Alexander, Solid Waste Management. Marvin here? Do we have a inscription? I want to read that inscription. We're going to present to Marvin the key to the city for his dedicated service. In recognition of Marvin Alexander, sanitation driver and leader for the City of Roanoke, having served as a public servant for approximately forty-five years, dedicated to the well-being of all citizens in the City of Roanoke, presented by the mayor and members of the Roanoke City Council on February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. All right. We're going to present this to Marvin for his years of service. All right. Our next recipient, for forty years of service, is James Hurt. All right. He's worked at Solid Waste Management. Does he have? Well, okay, he gets a clock, so, thank you. Let's give, let's give him a hand. All right. A forty-year recipient, and we, most of us all know her, Sheila Umberger, our city librarian, and Sheila is not here, but we want to recognize her for her years of dedicated service as a city librarian. We want to thank that. So let's give Susan a hand. All right. Thirty-five years of service. Dale Hurt, Circuit Court. In recognition of thirty-five years of outstanding and dedicated service to the City of Roanoke, Mayor Sherman, P. Lee Senior, and members of the city council, present to Dale Hurt on February the twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Dale, thank you for your service. Mark Kesterson, Fire and EMS. Mark has given us thirty-five years of service, and we thank him for that. Let's give him a hand. Deborah Marshall, Human and Social Services Department. Let's give Deborah a hand for thirty-five years of service. Teresa McDaniel, Human and Social Services. All right. We're going to have to get the memo out to some people. But let's give Teresa a hand for thirty-five years of service. And Pamela Poliski, Human and Social Services, thirty-five years of service. In recognition of thirty-five years of outstanding and dedicated service to the City of Roanoke, and this is from the mayor and members of the city council, Pamela, congratulations. Thirty years of service, Jill Lavender, Officer of the Commonwealth Attorney. John Price, Fire and EMS. And here's the thirty years of service. Let's give Jill and John a hand. Samuel Roy, Fire and EMS. All right. And Glenda Shaw, Human and Social Services. Let's give Samuel Roy and Glenda Shaw a hand for thirty years of service. All right. Members of council, before I asked them, I wanted to see if y'all had any words to say to these employees, these most recent employees, in the comments. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Congratulations. The stories you can tell. I mean, that's a lot of years of service, and I don't know if you all, have you all been in the same department that whole time?
No.
Yeah. So some of you have been in a variety, but two of you in the same department, which is dedication, and I, and I hope has fulfilled a lot of your passion for the work that you do in the city, and not only the relationships you have with your peers, but the relationships you have with citizens in the community that you connect with. So thank you all very much.
All right. Thank you, Jill. Ms. White Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say, being a city employee is truly a public service. We all know that, and I just want to say thank you so much for your dedication and your years of service. We are truly grateful. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all again. All right. Now, we want to recognize our Fire and EMS staff that's here today. I think all of you guys, I want to ask, Chief, you would come up and help me with these honors, this honor.
Chief, I think it might be better if you read this than I do. So, I'm sorry.
Just you, sir.
You go ahead. You can put a lot of emphasis on where it needs to be done and add what needs to be added.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of council, councilman, I mean, City Manager Bob Cowell. We greatly appreciate you taking the time to recognize some of our outstanding staff. And we got three incidences or emergency situations we dealt with over the last six months that have risen to the attention, and we have a few more than that, but, you know, it would pretty much be every month, every council meeting that we have. But these are truly some outstanding work that our men and women do. The first one is, we had a fire, and I'm going to read this, on September twentieth, Roanoke Fire EMS received a report of a structured fire, thirty-seven eighty Stratford Park Drive. Engine four, Medic four arrived within three minutes to find a large, three-story, multifamily apartment building with heavy fire showing from the first floor, south wing, and heavy smoke conditions throughout. Engine four, led by Captain Russell, called for a second alarm, which gets more additional apparatus on the way, and when Ladder Seven arrived, led by Captain Van Damme, Lieutenant Furrow, and firefighter Hacker entered the building, they experienced heavy black smoke conditions with multiple victims lining the hallway. Some of the victims were unconscious and had to be carried out. As, at that point in time, they called a third alarm when then-acting Battalion Chief, Brian Connor, who's been most recently promoted to Battalion Chief, he called for all city-available resources, and it's one of the few times since I've been in the city, we've actually dumped the city on one single call. And in this case, based on the life safety issue, the fire conditions, the smoke conditions, the people trapped in the upper floors, we actually dumped the entire city, every single engine, every single ladder, every ambulance that wasn't dedicated to another call came to this, that came to this call. In addition to that, we had four ambulances from Roanoke County, two ambulances from Salem, and a ladder truck from Salem to come and help us out due to the complexity, the life safety issue, the fact that we were dealing with three wings, with smoke, traveling all three floors. We also had a lot of people that had mobility issues. And when the fire alarm goes off, the elevator goes to the fourth floor and stops. So these people with mobility issues had to be carried down three flights of stairs to get out by the fire personnel. When the victims were carried out by Ladder Seven's crew, three of which were critical, three, and what I mean by critical, they were not breathing, they didn't have a pulse. Two of, two of those three individuals were resuscitated on the scene and transported to the hospital and survived. We did have one fatality that was, the injuries were not survivable, and we did have one person pass away. So Ladder Seven's crew is really led the rescue efforts of that south wing, and that was led by Captain Van Damme. But in addition to Ladder Seven, we also want to recognize the other captains that are here, Captain Drew Abel, Captain Mike Jenkins, Captain Dwayne Knoll. Am I missing anybody? Captain Russell, who I recognized was on the Engine Four, who led the fire attack. But in addition to that, we have Advanced Care Paramedic Lieutenant John, I mean, Jason Foch, who also managed the medical care of all the people that we cared for, not only ones that were transported, but the ones we treated and released on the scene, set up a medical sector and made sure that we had all the resources there and took care of the patients, and coordinated them going to the hospital and what hospitals could receive. I will tell you, when you get a call at, at early in the morning, and my pager goes off, or my phone goes off, and then I immediately start looking at the information, turn the radio on, and I hear the voices of our staff, and I know what they're up against, because we've had similar fires, but not the complexity that we had this time and the time, time when it occurred, they were all very calm. They were doing what they needed to do, they were communicating, and, you know, that really gives me a sigh of relief to know, even though then-acting Battalion Chief.
Brian Connor.
Dumps the whole city, which is what needed to be done on that call, and then we refer calls from the county, to the county in Salem, come help us in, it was a relief to know that everything was being taken care of. By the time I got there, all the critical patients were off the scene, and the ones that needed to be transported were in line to be transported, and they were treating those who were treated and released. I will tell you, it was outstanding work from all the men and women that were there that night, and that was sea shift. Also, we have in the audience Clarence Turpin, who was not on that day, but he also leads the north side sea shift staff, and his staff is also to be recognized for another call in Persell. But it really is a testament to those individuals. But I would not be, I'd be short-sighted if I also didn't recognize Trevor Shannon. Trevor Shannon leads our emergency management group, and he immediately started working with Rick Cross. We had over sixty people that had to have shelter that night and get someplace to live, not only short-term, but long-term. So Trevor Shannon is in the back with emergency management, and I will tell you, that works seamlessly. We got everything taken care of. We opened up a shelter in the civic center. We worked with Rick Cross to find them shelter beyond the civic center's capability. So hats off. So if you don't mind, I would like to ask everybody that was on that call that night to please stand. And that also includes the two other people we're recognizing. And I did miss one person. That was Tim Katie in the back. He was back filling for Clarence that night and Battalion Chief, and he was our safety officer that kind of ran the show to make sure we were keeping everybody safe, coordinating what was going on, staging and things of that nature. So it truly is a team effort as relates to those large fires that we have. And. We run the next one, sir?
Oh, yeah.
I got three of them, if that's okay.
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
You sure? All right. And one is more recently, on the morning of February fifth, Medic Five was returning to the fire station from the hospital when they noticed a vehicle driving very erratic. And I believe it was down Melrose Avenue, is that correct? Yeah, down Melrose Avenue. Once the vehicle stopped, firefighter Griggs and firefighter Babosa pulled behind the vehicle and find a panicked father with a twelve-year-old girl lifeless. The child was very close to full cardiac arrest. The team and firefighters, along with a paramedic Powell, Taylor Powell, who's over there with them, I'll get them to stand up in a minute. Engine Five crews led by Captain Wasson and Fadafi, and Rescue Supervisor Lieutenant Stovall, Josh Stovall. Aggressive treatment to the child's respiratory arrest. By the time the patient arrived at the hospital, the child was up and talking and was able to communicate with the staff, going from lifeless to close to cardiac arrest to being able to turn that medical event around, get that child breathing again, give them the medications they needed, and by the time they got to the hospital, the child was up and talking. If that had not occurred and we had not intervened, we would be not have a twelve-year-old child in our community right now. And it was all in due part for these ladies and gentlemen recognizing something was going on, didn't know what, pulled up behind them, intercepted the child's, the vehicle the child was being driven in, and started caring for that child. And so if that crew, please stand. All right. I do have one other, and this one, I think y'all have read about in the newspaper and some other media outlets. Fire EMS was dispatched to report a structured fire at three twenty-five in the morning on January twenty-first at thirteen hundred block of Persell Avenue. A two-story residential fire, they arrived, they had two-story residence with fire coming from the roof with a victim on the roof that needed to be rescued, actually outside the third-story dormer. The fire actually started in the attic where that person was sleeping, and it blocked that individual's ability to get out. At three o'clock in the morning, it really is one of our highest-risk time to get people out of the house. The team from Ladder Two, First Lieutenant Kevin Bradbury, firefighter Williamson, and firefighter, firefighter Botner quickly went into action, set the aerial, and rescued that individual from the third-story dormer. And really made a difference between, he had to be transported, but really made a difference between him being transported and released, or him being transported and actually had to be admitted or further injury. So the gentleman on Ladder Two, please stand. And from the fire department perspective, we do have official certificates of appreciation we'll issue to them as part of our normal recognition process, but we do greatly appreciate the time before council for these, and these individuals to be recognized.
Thank you, Chief. Nobody can tell it like you can. That's why I want you to do that. But we're so grateful in this city for all that you do. You know, and I watch football games on TV, and I see a person score a touchdown, and they get all up, and people just go fanatic and standing because they're looking at their hero. They're happy about it. But you guys are the heroes. That's why we can't applaud you enough for what you do in our city and the lives you save and the commitment and dedication all of y'all have given. That's why I'm just so proud and pleased to be the mayor of this city because of the leadership and the work that you all put in. That's great. We don't take it for granted. Thank you all. And I'm going to ask my colleagues on council, if they have any comments or things that they'd like to say. Vice Mayor.
Yes, just three words. You are phenomenal. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations. That was some amazing work. I didn't know the magnitude of the first incident that you talked about, Chief, in Stratford Park. We saw it on the news. We had no idea that it was that, that large and that big of a problem for our city, and everybody came out.
I will tell you that the staff there was amazed that we had the surviving of so many people there, and it was a testament to the leadership of the captains, of Battalion Chiefs, the EMS operations, advanced care paramedics that were there, that really made a huge difference in the lives of those impacted, and the coordination, and the fact that they were so calm, getting everything done. They knew what they had to do, and they did it in sequence, and coming out and caring for those. So it really is, it's amazing.
Yes, thank you so much. Yes, thank you so much, and can't, like, like the mayor said, we just certainly can't thank you enough for that kind of work in, in the city, and your professionalism, and saving lives and all the work that you've done. Thank you so much.
And also not having any injuries to your staff, that is phenomenal.
None of those incidents resulted in injuries to our personnel, no sir. Come in.
I just wanna say how proud I am of, of the fire department. You guys are a perfect example of how team works. You are very united in what you do, and you exemplify the star city. All is shining. Thank you for your commitment and all you do.
Just wanted to say, there's no department in this city that I feel I see more often than the people under your command, and I want to thank them for everything that they do. I don't think that the recognition they receive here today is enough, but I hope it's worth something.
I would like to say one other thing, and it's a caveat to what we're gonna do next Tuesday. Thirty-seven eighty Stratford Park was part of what we designed in our accreditation. And our accreditation on Tuesday, we will testify before the board and the commission down in Florida to receive our reaccreditation for the fifth time. This, this city has been reaccredited five times since I, since, and I've been on every one of them since 2002. But that accreditation process is really focused on doing things better every week, every month, every year. And I will tell you, we have some people behind us that when we had the first fire, really recognized that we need to do something as part of our plan to do something and make a response matrix that really addresses the hazard in that one place. And because of that, we went from sending three engines and two ladders to that complex because the staff recognized mobility issues, to sending five engines and three ladders on initial response to get that front-loaded workforce there to make a difference so that we can make an impact on what we do. And that's part of what our accreditation is, is making a difference, it's progressiveness and making it so that we do a better job every year, they come and visit, but we also internally look at ourselves to do things better. And that's a product of it. But next Tuesday, we do testify before the commission, and hopefully we'll bring, I know we'll bring back the plaque again to be reaccredited for another five years.
All you guys are heroes, know that. Let me recognize one other person before we leave. Tiffany Bradbury's here. She, she left us.
We have her.
She left us, and I'm glad to see her, she's doing a great job out in Bottletop County. And I miss her so much because she taught me how to cut my computer on and do Zoom. She taught me, put in my ID and my password, which was which, it kept going out, and the meeting was going on, and I was about to give up and say, this is a meeting I'm gonna miss. But Tiffany stayed on that and stayed with me, and Tiffany, I think I can do some things now pretty good, but thank you for all your time spent working with me and getting me accustomed to the Zoom meetings. You know, I would have preferred to let's do it on the phone or when we get together, but the Zoom meeting, which was great. But I appreciate you, I'm glad to see you here today, hope you're doing well, and God bless you and your father. Thank you. All right. Tiffany, it ain't working. It's still not coming. Oh, man. Okay, I've got all this here. Announcement, two, announcement. All right, all right, we're down now to, down to the consent agenda, Madam Clerk?
No, hearing of citizens. Hearing of citizens.
Hearing of citizens, how could I miss that? All right, we are now down to the hearing of citizens upon public matters, and City Council sets this time aside as a priority for citizens to be heard. We do this in Roanoke, a lot of the community don't do it as often as we do, but we give citizens a time to be heard on, to talk about an issue of your choice. All matters now will be referred to the city manager for a response, a recommendation, or report to council as he may deem appropriate. All right, and with that, I'll, and I'm glad to see councilman Bill Best pitch back in, back in the chamber again.
Or council.
I thought she did. All right, Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers signed?
We do, we have three speakers. Our first speaker is David Tucker.
Good afternoon. Mayor Lee.
Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor Cobb, city manager, members of council. My name is David Tucker, I live at 2432 Stanley Avenue. If you're not familiar with it, it's the Halloween Street. You can, you can find it on Google. My parents were buried in, are buried in Cedar Long Cemetery, and as a consequence of that, I received a letter from the F and W, FW Cemetery Corporation announcing that they're dissolving their corporation effective July 1. In addition to the Fairview properties and the city-owned and maintained historic cemetery at Tasla Avenue, there are numerous private cemeteries in the city. Some are well-maintained and self-sustaining, and others are not. In particular, allow me to discuss Olick Cemetery located on Melrose Avenue at the interchange of I-581. This cemetery is owned by First Baptist Church. This congregation provides mowing and maintenance for the cleared areas of the cemetery, however, a larger portion is overgrown with brush and trees. I'm active with a group called the Friends of Olick Cemetery, a group of twenty or so individuals organized and led by Ellen Stick. We, we meet monthly to clear brush, ground stumps, and plant daffodils. At Olick, we're moving from an area of small brush to an area of larger trees, deciding which trees to keep, felling these long, larger trees and grinding these larger stumps are anticipated needs that are beyond our current capabilities. These are short-term needs, there are also some long-term needs in terms of fencing and parking, et cetera. I don't know, I don't have any specific knowledge regarding a nearby Springwood Cemetery located at the intersection of Liberty Road and Hunt Avenue. It appears, however, that that cemetery faces some of the challenges that Olick does as well. My request today is that the city manager and staff include conversations with the owners and stakeholders of these and other cemeteries as a part of the effort to address the FW Cemetery February 3rd letter. The goal of this effort would be to determine specific needs and hopefully establish a means that the city can assist, assist with these needs at other cemeteries. My hope is that we all agree that everybody buried in the various cemeteries deserve to rest in peace and dignity, and a broad approach at this time to look at the needs of all city cemeteries will help achieve this end. I appreciate this opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Frida Cathcart.
Hi, or good afternoon. I'm, I wanted to update you all on the launch of the Neighborhood Council was a week ago on Valentine's Day. We did a program called For the Love of Our Neighborhoods, and it was in honor of Estelle McCadden, because of her work bringing the Neighborhood Association concept to Roanoke, and all of her work co-founding the Melrose Rugby Neighborhood, and then she worked with the, bringing the Neighborhood Conference, the statewide Neighborhood Conference, and also served on the national Neighborhood Councils. We had a good turnout last week from all across the city, and people spoke with very kind words and inspirations about Ms. McCadden and the need to continue her work in our neighborhoods, that, that, that's what she would really want, is to serve our neighborhoods and, and to support each other in those efforts. Survey was launched at that time, I'm hoping to get more out there to the public. It's a survey for existing and experienced neighborhood leaders, but as well as people who might live in, in the area that doesn't have a current active neighborhood, or might be interested in neighborhood leadership, to connect them with mentors and, and to the council so that they can get support to do that. At this point, over twenty people have signed or completed the survey, and from all regions of the city, some are experienced and active neighborhood leaders and active neighborhood associations, and some don't even know if they have a neighborhood association, but they're interested in getting involved and becoming a leader in their neighborhood. So I, I thought that was a good first, first step to get out there. So since then, there's been follow-up, trying to plan our first meeting, and in response to the email that was sent out to everybody, I got this angry email back where somebody was accusing us of not listening to the neighborhoods and was upset with this, with the city and the city plan, and, and there was a lot of confusion where I was just like, look, we're, we're brand new, we're definitely going to listen to the neighborhoods, and, you know, I hope that you'll reconsider and be, and be a part of this, I don't, and so with the follow-up communication, it seemed like his neighborhood was being, being pressured to become a nonprofit to get some type of grant, and that he was worried about that, and, and that his neighborhood didn't want to do those steps. And I, I can understand that, because when I first got involved with our Neighborhood Association, it was after there had been like a treasury, and, and there were some accusations that there was missing money, but I think the money was spent on neighborhood signs, but there wasn't good reporting and accounting and communications, and so it had made things really divisive. So I wanted to give a heads up to the city to be careful about that, that the work that we do with our neighborhood associations are, you know, just the real basic things, like the other day I got a call from a couple in Georgia that wanted to buy a house in our neighborhood and wanted to know if the noise from the coffee pot, if they'd hear it from their street that they were going to buy on, and I could assure them that there was a whole hill between where the little coffee pot is, the bar, and where their house was going to be, and generally, we're a quiet, boring neighborhood, and we kind of like it that way. And even if you lived right near the coffee pot, it wasn't bad. And I got another call from a neighbor worried about code enforcement and about a potential car business being run out of their thing, and wondering what to do, and connecting them with code enforcement. So those are some of the exciting things that neighborhood leaders get to do, is to be that connection. I'm hoping for better communication with city staff and especially support from the city for our efforts. We are independent, and we want to maintain our independence, but we do want to work in collaboration. A lot of us were really concerned when we heard that Sunny Parvians, I think is how her name is pronounced, had resigned from the Roanoke Neighborhood Advocates, and that the Southeast Action Forum has dissolved. When we had our launch last week, a bunch of us hung around afterwards and were sharing stories, connecting, it'd been a while since we'd been together, but there was this echo of frustration, of feeling that our voices were not being heard by city staff, and that people were going and participating with community engagement, filling out surveys, and, and city plans were being made, but then they were seeing where those plans weren't being followed, and that was very discouraging for them. So anyhow, I just wanted to give you all an update on that and, and hoping that we can move forward in a positive direction. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And our last speaker is Jean Elliott.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, city manager and city attorney. I didn't expect to be, this is the last place I expected to be when I woke up this morning. I came down to the first floor of my house, and there was more city equipment in front of my house than I could imagine. There was, there were two aerial bucket trucks, big trucks, a truck with a chipper behind it, another truck with a crane to load tree trunks and large limbs, another truck, I have no idea what it was for, and a pickup truck. I went outside and found an arborist of the city who was very nice and very polite, who basically said there would be one, I found out that because the street in front of my house was paved, that the city would repair the sidewalks next to it. Thank you very much for repaving the, the street, and the sidewalks in front of my house need to be repaired, and, and that's valid. But the arborist said that one tree would be cut down, and depending upon when the concrete was pulled up from the sidewalks, there could be more that would be cut down. Otherwise, that the trunks of the trees, and I think what she meant was the lower part of the tree as it spreads out would be ground back, and if that didn't work, then they might have to cut trees down. So she then introduced me to the Public Infrastructure Inspector, Transportation Division of the city of Roanoke, and he was in charge of doing sidewalks. I asked him about the trees and sidewalk, we were standing on sidewalk, he pointed down the sidewalk and said, see that sidewalk, it's straight? And the Department of Justice of the United States requires that it be forty inches wide. And I suspect he meant the Department of Transportation rather than, than Justice, but at any rate, I asked him where these, these trees, this is the sort of quote-unquote beautifully tree-lined streets that I think the city of Roanoke is trying to maintain under their forty-year tree policy. I asked him if it was possible to move the sidewalk twelve to eighteen inches and not disturb the trees. And I, the arborist was there, I asked her if grinding the trees would subject them to insects and disease coming in and negatively affecting the trees, and she said, yes, that was a definite possibility. So the inspector indicated that they, the arborist and he would put their heads together and try to resolve the issue, if not, it would go to an engineer. And meanwhile, there are all these trucks around, the sole purpose of which I could determine they were engineered to cut trees down. So he then said that the city would have to acquire the property to curve the sidewalk, and I indicated- I asked him if it was possible to move sidewalk 12 to 18 inches and not disturb the trees. And I, the arborist was there. I asked her if grinding the trees would subject them to insects and disease coming in and negatively affecting the trees. And she said, yes, that was a definite possibility. So the inspector indicated that they, the arborist and he would put their heads together and try to resolve the issue. If not, it would go to an engineer. And meanwhile, there are all these trucks around, the sole purpose of which I could determine they were engineered to cut trees now. So he then said that the city would have to acquire the property to curve the sidewalk. And I indicated to him that the city owned 10 more feet on the side that would have to be curved, so that really wasn't an issue. They didn't say too much after that. They gave me the phone number of Hong Liu, an engineer that deals with that. I called him and he hasn't called me back, but in fairness to him, he may have been out of town or anything else today. So it was fortuitous that this meeting was scheduled, but what my request would be that the city be able to be flexible enough not to disturb the trees when minor adjustments could be made to sidewalks and those trees preserved, rather than have this straight-line theory that there's a sidewalk, it goes straight and any tree that gets in the way of it is, finds itself in harm's way. Those, all that equipment disappeared after I left to call Mr. Liu. And I don't know whether they're going to come back tomorrow. Construction of the sidewalk hadn't commenced on my side of the street, but I think that it's not just our block, it's blocks whether they're in northwest or southeast or any other parts of the city. There ought to be some flexibility to have these trees undisturbed and not re-forced. That was the other thing. Well, don't worry, we'll put a tree out and it takes 100 years to get back to where we were. So I thank you for your time. I know it's a small issue compared to Stratford Park life-saving, but I ask for your consideration to try to identify those issues before the tree, before the trucks show up. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to refer that to the city manager to follow up on that.
And we will, we'll follow up with Mr. Elliott as well. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes the citizens to be heard. All right, we're now down to, I don't know, four on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the members of city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. I want to call your attention to two requests for closed meeting, one from council member Patricia White Boyd, Chairman of the City Council Personnel Committee, requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss a personnel matter, being the media performance of council-appointed officers pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia as amended. And from the city manager, requesting a closed meeting to discuss the possible acquisition of real estate in the northern area of the City of Roanoke, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia as amended. All right, I need a motion.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the consent agenda is approved. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor, we do have walk-on requests for closed meeting that I have for litigation that I received notice of after the agenda was sent out.
All right, we received it.
And we have that letter in front of you.
Hey Mayor, I would like to make a motion to amend the consent agenda to include the walk-on closed session. There will be a consult with legal counsel regarding current litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the body and that's pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7 Code of Virginia 1950 as amended.
Second.
In a second?
Yes.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we're now going into our regular agenda in the public hearing. We have none, petitions and communications none. And now we have a report of the city officers and comments by the city manager. And we'll now ask our city manager about our briefings.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, we have two briefings this afternoon. The first is, you may recall, a couple of months ago, in addition to us sending out the monthly budget update or the briefing in the weekly update, we actually started providing that in the council packet. There was a request that in addition to providing it in the packet, that there be a brief briefing of that information. And so today is, this meeting is the first meeting. This briefing will be present at the second meeting of each month. So that will be sort of the routine as we go forward. It is always, of course, looking back one month because the February will look at January and so on as we go forward. So that will be our first briefing and then as soon as Brent has concluded that briefing, then we will go into the capital improvement program and I'll kind of introduce that item when we get to that point as well. So at this point, Brent's going to walk you through the January monthly update from the FY '23 budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cowell, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. You received, I think, after you received your packet, the this month or the year-to-date financial statements ending of the month of January. If we could go to the revenue, do I, I think, do we have the size here that might make it a little easier to? Yeah, let's see, is that first? And going to be a very simple review and certainly if there's any questions, we'll take care of those, but it's really looking at the revenue and expenditure year-to-date and just giving you a brief overview. And I apologize for the size, you do have this in your information. And I think the first thing I would like to point out is the reporting timeframe that we have here is kind of an interesting time for us in that from the revenue perspective, all of the revenues have not been closed out completely since December because of our revenue software system that's being implemented right now. I mean, this was planned. I think we had hoped to have it a little sooner, some of the final implementation issues. But basically what has occurred is we have had soft closes for December and January. There are still some issues in the nitty-gritty of the software that our auditor and the implementation team is taking care of, but it's getting the revenues into the right buckets per se. So this is what the system has in it. In some of the categories, you can tell that there is two months of revenue missing from here. If you don't mind, I would go down the list of a couple of the major ones and just give you some idea. Since we could not really give you the updated numbers as of today, we thought we'd just give you the overall view of where we are in our major categories, just for that comfort and to give the implementation team. Hopefully this next month, we'll have that fully implemented, tested, and we will be back to normal. But if you would, in order to kind of keep track of where we are, we do not have the final numbers. I think on a monthly basis this time of year, that's not really that concerning to us, but we do keep up on a number of items. For example, we do meet quarterly as a revenue team. That includes Drew Harmon, the auditor, Ryan LaFontaine, treasurer, accounting staff, other audit staff, as well as where we talk about what they're seeing, especially the commissioner and the treasurer in their office, what is the traffic in and out, what are the numbers they're seeing. And it gives us an idea of kind of where we're going and what our expectations are, really before we see the numbers. So it's really doing a little field work in advance. In addition, there is still some audit entries that have to be reversed out. This is the time of year where that happens and you could get a little strangeness to that, but those should all fall out within the next month or two as well. But my message overall is revenues are still good, they're healthy, and we are expecting to have a fairly, I'm not going to say significant, but a comfortable surplus at year-end based on the numbers that we generated in the last close in November. I think we reported to you around a $10 million anticipated surplus at year-end. There's really nothing that we have seen at this point that would make us change our minds on that. I would like to go down through a couple of the revenue categories if you don't mind, just to let you know where we stand as far as our internal discussions. The real estate tax is obviously our largest one. You'll notice as a percent of budget or a target budget should be about 58% for all those categories. That is not really going to work out all the time. It's just a straight line, 1/12th of every month to give us a point to look. For example, sales tax is usually two months behind. A lot of the other trust taxes are at least a month behind that come back to us, things like that. So as you see, the real estate is running 52% instead of 58. Nothing to be concerned about, that's just the collection, could be some of the software implementation. Would like to indicate that the real estate staff is in the midst of appeals right now because of our, I believe, 9.66% increase overall, the appeals are up. I didn't get the breakdown compared to last year, but they have had 1,835 inquiries to date. They have had 344 actual appeals. That's significant in that the staff has to go through every one of those and lay their hands on it and work with the taxpayer who's made the appeal. To date, they have completed 206 and have 138 still to go. So they still have work to go, but once again, the effects of the reassessment and new construction would not be felt until June anyway. So this is just our prior assessment for our new construction numbers. As you go down, personal property tax, again, that's seeing a minus 1%. That's just a function of the PCI implementation, as well as this time of year with the audit entries, especially around the rebates that we made of real estate back in December. And I'm here for finance to say, please don't give rebates ever again. Do credits, it really, the system was not designed to go in reverse and spit out money on the other end. It was a big deal for staff and so I want to give my hands out to them. It was something I'm sure our taxpayers enjoyed, certainly deserved getting there, but let's talk about the rate a little bit as we go early in the process next time. With Ryan LaFontaine, the Commissioner of Revenue, indicates that things are moving smoothly down there. We're not anticipating any kind of large strange thing like happened last year with used car values. Used car values have moderated. New car sales are picking up, so while one goes down, the other goes up. So we're thinking hopefully a fairly normal year with a light amount of growth to it, we hope, as that, but we will be able to report that back to you, the personal property numbers, before the budget is adopted. So that will be fortunate there. As you look down at the sales tax number, we're showing 47% of a 58% budget. We have actually received those monies, we can calculate that one, and we are running about 7.5% above last year's, which puts us comfortably above budget. Interestingly enough, our Christmas sales, which usually make or break you, were flat this year, about the same as they were the previous year. So we've had a very good year running up to December and things are still looking pretty good as we go into the spring. Business occupational license, that's always one that's got 11% that not much comes in. That pretty much almost all comes in, Tim, you remember, you're looking at me, the date is around the end of March, I believe, somewhere. So that almost all comes in at once. And after last year's, the way they came in, we were somewhat buoyed with this year because people have had a year of recovery from the pandemic, so we think those will do good. And prepared foods and beverage tax, once again, seems to be running above budget for the year. Those are running a month behind, but no reason to be concerned. I think those will generate a decent surplus by year-end as well. Other than that, I would point down to the revenue from use of money and property in the lower third or quarter of the page. I just point that one out because we've been receiving a couple hundred thousand dollars a year in interest income for the last several years. And you can see now, we've picked up a million four through five or six months this year and that's primarily as interest rates rise and our ARPA money sits there that has come to our benefit. And Mr. Cowell, I believe that money can be used for the ARPA projects as well. So that's 40. So I'll stop there. That's a kind of a high overview of the revenues. See if there are any questions or comments that we can provide. Yes, Mr. Pretty?
All right, just thank you for the briefing. So if I understand right, the business and occupational license, that's because the licenses aren't due until March 30th.
Correct.
So we're going to typically see this every year until we get right up to the start of April.
Yes, sir. It's quite a guessing game in trying to get information on how small business and medium businesses' years went.
This is more a comment, I think, more appropriate for Susan Lauer. It'd be interesting to see a breakdown of appeals based on how long a homeowner has been in that home and whether or not they provide an appeal. I don't know if she's watching, so to note for Bob. And the comment regarding rebates versus credits, this is a question probably for the city attorney and Bob, I understand we only had the authority to offer those rebates. I'm not sure that the council, well, I wasn't on council at the time, had the authority to offer a credit for the upcoming year, but based on Elisa's report, it doesn't sound like that's going to be necessary for the personal property tax as automobile values are leveling back out. I just wanted to verify that on the credit piece. The credit couldn't be offered.
And actually, at the time that council started the discussion on personal property, even the rebate option wasn't available. That was all kind of in flux, but you're correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you. There are no more, I'm sorry.
I have one question. With the gaming distributors, why is it still listed on there and there's no revenue from it? Are we not collecting anything from those machines or we just don't tax them?
I'm going to look back at Paul or someone. My guess is that shows up because historically we did.
We did.
And now we don't. And it's still just showing up in our, as long as we have a few years of history, it'll still give us the title. So we can easily delete that if it's no longer being.
Yeah, and my recollection is from before, you know, we actually receive repayment, if you will, of those taxes from the state, so we don't actually collect it. It's collected at the point of activity was sent to the state. The state sends a piece of it back and even then it's, because I know we've talked about this before, it's kind of designated to certain types of uses as well.
And they're not collecting it anymore, are they?
Bob, is this a gray-skill machines?
I believe that's what.
The gaming, the skilled gaming.
Currently, they're legally allowed to operate, but there's no method of taxing them. The General Assembly has failed to take any action on it this year, so they'll continue to exist in that way.
And that's different than it was during COVID. Remember, there was kind of the emergency provision.
Right, right, yeah, sure.
And it was being collected and we were receiving. And so I think Brent's right, that's an item, a line item that we have carried over because we still reflect previous revenues from it, but currently not receiving.
Thank you, Brent.
You're welcome.
Mayor, I could have a question if I could.
Yeah.
Under your revenue from use of money or property, I noticed you have an increase there, a significant increase actually. Could you tell me what that's from? Is that from rent?
No, it's going to be primarily, and I, once again, Paul, if I'm wrong, you know, shout behind me here, that we perceive the ARPA money and we received a lot of that early.
So this, okay.
And, yeah, so we're holding millions of dollars of ARPA money and about that time is when our interest earnings start.
Oh, okay, okay.
So that is pretty much all related to that.
So it's coming in on interest?
Yeah.
I think the last check-in, check with Evelyn, the treasurer, interest earned with, some were approaching half a million dollars on those funds, I think, at this point. And as Brent mentioned, it's available for us when we get to that point to spend. It has to be spent in exactly the same way as the ARPA dollars, but certainly there are, when they sent us two $32 million checks, the interest does begin to accumulate, even as we spend the money.
Mm-hmm, love interest. Yes.
It used to be a lot nicer to us. It used to be a lot nicer too as than it is today. It's getting better.
Yeah, we're getting there. And the other one, under the personal property tax, I see where you have negative for the actual in '22, and then in the actual for '23. What drove it to the negative for both of them?
For the most part, what you see without having, you know, the actual billing and collections is proration that occurs during when people come in, trade in a car, their D, do we have decals in the city anymore?
No.
We do not, okay. Or, you know, get their new registration and things like that. So really, it's hard until you get the billing and start receiving collections to really have a guess. What we do at this time of the year and earlier is we scrub a lot of NADA reports, a lot of Kelley Blue Book, to see what the overall values of cars are doing and things like that. But really, the numbers we have in those two years are really just a function, unless, once again, there's been an entry somewhere of generally proration of just activity in and out of the Commissioner and Treasurer's office during the course of the year.
And part of it was the rebate, you said?
Well, what happens, yeah, we've had to move around a lot and move it from this fund to the other, just to do it correctly, with the auditor's help and things of that nature. And part of the year end is also accruing and then reversing the entries. And what that means is if you get a, collect money in July and it was really for June, you accrue it back.
Yeah.
What happens in June, or July, the next time, is it negative? It goes negative.
Okay.
You know, to reverse out, so you catch it at the end of the year. And that could be what happened. I'd be happy, maybe to, if this doesn't turn itself around in the next report to you, I'd be happy to give you an analysis of that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. But overall, it seemed like a good report, and it seemed like we were trending well.
Yes.
Under the circumstances.
Yes, I agree totally.
Well, thank you for your report.
You're welcome. And if we can turn to the next page of expenditures, and this might be briefer unless you have some questions, because we have a large budget with a lot of different call centers and account codes, and I'm not sure exactly, you know, what to present to council that would be useful to you, other than broadly in these categories. And these categories, I believe, are the, sort of have the APA requires them, and so our system will regurgitate them this way. I think my message here primarily would be the software implementation did not affect expenditures, so these can be viewed as correct. Looking at straight-line depreciation for what budget should be consumed at this point is 58%, and we are running at below that in all of our categories except judicial, which I'm pretty sure they have a lot of front-end loading. They could, oh, well, they're showing 60% over 58.
There's some accruals.
Some accruals, or, and they have some front-end loading of subscriptions and magazines and law things you get on subscription and things like that that make them spend a lot earlier. But all in all, across the organization, we're 54% when it should be 58. And I would like to let you know that out of a million, Paul's office, the analysts work with department heads monthly, pretty much all the time, to deal with things, issues, things like that. So that's how we keep up on the expenditure on a month-to-month basis. It's the Budget Office who grills the department heads and staff on an ongoing basis. So with that, is there any questions or comments? Thank you, Brent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilor, and Brent, thank you. Our second briefing is, I guess I'll refer to this as a bonus briefing, because you'll recall, at your last meeting, we had our regular monthly budget briefing as we worked toward preparing the FY '24 budget. And typically with our, when we introduce CIP discussions, we typically do that in two meetings. So what you would have found under normal circumstances would be a February-March briefing. For a number of reasons, we've decided to sort of stretch that out over several briefings, probably three to four in total. It allows us, I think, to present a little bit of this information in a little more detail and allows a little bit
Does she fall?
A little bit more time to.
There's a bunch of people back there, too. Must have been off the chair. Oh, damn.
Was it in fall? And the, so the briefing, by doing it this way, will allow us, I think, to offer a little bit more time to digest some of what's being shared. There's nothing really dramatically different. However, we do know from some of the work that's been done already that we shared with you last time, that due to inflationary costs, we are having to move some things around a bit more in the CIP than maybe we have had to in the past. So that's a part of the reason why we're doing it this way. At the last meeting, you'll recall that we focused predominantly on sharing with you a reminder of the process that we use to identify CIP projects and how they go through that process, and we gave you a bit of a glimpse of kind of how things are progressing with the current-year CIP. So what Paul's going to walk you through now is actually what is beginning to shape up for the FY '24 CIP. So you'll recall, what we're going to end up showing you over these briefings is a five-year CIP, but the first year is really the most important because that's the year that's getting incorporated into the current-year budget. So that's why we're starting with this. At the next briefing, we'll actually talk about the CIP that goes from really '25 out to '28. That'll be the next briefing. So today's, we'll focus on '24. What's that?
Oh, the screen's off.
Everything's falling apart. So we got one screen over there. So, and so what we'll do is, part of what Paul will show you is what was anticipated to be in the FY '24 budget, or CIP, last year, and ultimately what we're heading toward recommending this year. Again, this is all for information's sake. There's no action required or anything. That'll all come with the budget approval. This is just to begin to be able to shape that out a little bit more as well. So with that, Paul, with our one screen, we'll work.
Yeah, we'll work. We'll be fine. Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Cobb, members of City Council, good afternoon. My goal this afternoon is to provide you with the near-term projects that will be included in our capital improvement program, or CIP. I'll start with the reminder of what we endorsed last May and authorized in July. Then we will move into the fiscal year '24 initial project considerations. Afterwards, I'll be happy to discuss any questions, and there are several project managers here in the chambers to help answer your questions as well. We won't be covering the full proposed CIP, as Bob mentioned, and that will come at a future briefing. I'd also like to mention that the presentation that we'll be going over today will have some very small numbers. And so anybody who is watching at home, if they wanted to bring this presentation up, they can find it on the Management and Budgets website under Budget Development. The next three slides recap authorizations and plan approvals that have already taken place. On Slide 3, we show funding that was provided for the current year, fiscal year '23, through cash or grant funding. With the exception of Eureka Rec Center, the funding amounts shown represent the annual base funding amounts. In some cases, additional one-time or ARPA funds were also provided but are not shown. Essentially, what we're showing here is those typical cash or grant-provided programs during fiscal year '23, which includes annual bridge maintenance of $520,000, annual street paving of $4.2 million, which we typically will grow each year depending on how much the state provides in additional funds. We have fleet capital replacement of $1.5 million. This is a net amount. Typically, we provide a base amount of about $2.35 million and then reduce that amount based on the amount of debt service that is associated with bonds that are issued related to fleet capital purchases. We have technology capital improvements of about $1 million, capital building maintenance of $250,000, and the Eureka Rec Center of $8 million with ARPA funds and $4.525 million provided through year-end cash funding. The next two slides show the current bond funding-funded five-year CIP that was endorsed with the budget last summer. As with any long-range plan, changes in cost estimates and priorities are the norm. Even though the CIP is a five-year plan, it is only the first year of that plan that council authorizes the issuance of bonds. I'm not going to go into these slides in detail, but I'm only showing them as a reference of our starting point. It is important that I do pause to explain one change to our typical approach regarding fiscal year '23 bond-funded projects. When the CIP is approved in May, the projects are immediately provided a budget in early July, even though the bonds are not sold typically until nine to 10 months later. This is called advanced appropriation of bonds. It allows project managers to begin work as soon as the bonds are authorized by council, even though they have not yet been issued. In some cases, city council authorization is required before a grant may be applied for or accepted. The downside to this is that this can lead to issue bonds long before construction costs are incurred. For projects spanning one or two years, this is typically not a problem. However, for projects spanning three or four years, when grant awarding timing is uncertain or other construction delays occur, this approach needs a more just-in-time approach. In the past, we've issued bond anticipation notes under the advice of our municipal advisors, and we've had some financial success to this approach. The downside is it involves interest rate risk when risks are rising, and secondly, can result in high bond issuance costs because you're essentially issuing the same dollar twice. The good news is there's a practical and simple approach we'd like to use for our 2023 bonds issuance, which will take place in the coming months. Bond council has reassured us, city council's resolution for the authorization to issue bonds has no expiration date, although re-including them in each successive year's authorization is recommended. In the case of the Main Street Bridge, our largest bridge project ever, the 2023 authorization issuance of $13.75 million won't actually be spent until 2025, based on revised spending projections. Therefore, we'd like to postpone that portion of the 2023 authorization and not actually issue them until our standard 2025 issuance. As you'll eventually see, this bridge project is also expected to be more expensive due to rising construction costs. Therefore, we'd like to include the increased costs in our next bond authorization, but not plan on selling those bonds until needed, which will become much clearer to us with the passing of time. So Slide 5 is essentially the second page of the current CIP plan. And again, I'll mention to anybody at home that they can find this presentation on our website. It's in our budget document as well. Slide 6 is the focus of today's presentation, and this is the fiscal year '24 projects and the changes we will likely propose in the next CIP. As we develop our plan towards a viable five-year plan, it is important that we prioritize projects in such a way to ensure we continue to follow our debt policy guidelines. The evolving plan will be within those policy guidelines, but any new projects or changes in the project timeline must be first way to ensure debt policy guidelines are followed and financially feasible. The first column on this slide represents the starting point from our last CIP approved by council. Anything highlighted in blue represents a change. New project names highlighted on the left in blue are new projects. The third column from the left with blue highlights represents changes to the planned bond issuance, and the second to last column in blue represents the new cash funding for projects. Nearly all of these cash changes represent one-time cash funding needs and not ongoing operational needs. So we'll start at the top of our list with city schools requests of $12.855 million. There will be no changes to their original request, and will involve year two of the construction to replace Preston Park Elementary, HVAC roof replacements, replacement at Lincoln Terrace, recreating a new sod for the practice field at Patrick Henry, a new playground at Hurt Park Elementary, and roof replacement at Fishwick Middle School. The next project, 13th Street Southwest over Norfolk Southern Railway, was successful in obtaining grant funds, so the $2 million in bonds are no longer necessary. Wiley Drive Low Water Bridge is a new project to the CIP, thanks to a congressional earmark of $2.5 million. The city would need to issue $1.5 million in fiscal year '24 to support this project. Unfortunately, as projects expand in price and scope, there will be some compromises that must be made. The Belmont-Lance Library Branch is being proposed to push out in order to accommodate the expanding inflationary costs of this project. No changes to the Washington Park Pool of $2.4 million, nor the Skate Park for $1 million in bonds. Eureka Rec Center will receive $475,000 to round out its total funding of $13 million. The Burgland Center request will remain level funded at $1.5 million, which will help remodel the BPAT restroom, conversion of parking lot lights to LED, and replacement of the roof at BPAT. Stormwater will receive their typical $3 million, and will supplement that with stormwater revenues of half a million dollars. Projects include a wide range of work, including initial projects to reduce flooding downtown, various neighborhood drainage projects, continued acquisition of flood-prone properties, and various flood mitigation and small construction projects. Curb, gutter, and sidewalk work is separated into two categories: building of new sidewalks and maintaining existing sidewalks. New sidewalks will receive bond funding of $2 million, while maintaining existing sidewalks will receive an increase of half a million dollars in bond funding and an additional $1 million in cash funding. No changes in streetscape improvements, which will receive the standard half a million dollars in bond funds. Street paving and ADA ramps began receiving additional bond funds of $1 million several years ago, and will continue this going forward. But on top of this, we have also identified an additional $1 million in cash funding for fiscal year '24. Traffic signal modernization is a new project to the CIP. This involves efforts to replace old span wire supports with signal masked arms that can support modern intersection technology. The city owns 144 signal intersections. There are 67 remaining with old technology. Each intersection costs approximately half a million dollars. Other components of the traffic signal modernization plan include signal conflict monitors, signal cabinets and controller upgrades and replacements, video camera detection, and aging span wire replacements. All included, the plan would cost $35 million. The $300,000 cash provided will allow for A and E efforts that will hopefully aid in applying for grants to help fund this program. Passenger rail Amtrak station will be postponed based on Amtrak's evaluation of their post-COVID business model. Fleet capital receives funding from multiple areas. As previously mentioned, they receive annual operating funds that are reduced by debt service related to bond issuances. In fiscal year '23, that is netting out about $1.5 million in operating funds and will decrease to about $1 million in fiscal year '24. Bond-funded fleet purchases were originally requested to be $600,000. Since then, significant additional needs have been identified. To help close this gap, we would propose increasing it about $1.4 million, bringing the bond issuance to $2 million. This additional funding would allow us to replace our hazmat truck and trailer that alone costs $1.4 million. We would also increase the one-time cash funding by about $1.2 million, which will help fund one new ambulance, 12 public safety vehicles, and one police K-9 unit. Our current ERP financial system is at its end of support from the vendor. This replacement is underway and on track and will require $1.9 million in bonds to support this project. The global HR migration, global payroll, and talent management software upgrades was originally planned to be replaced between fiscal year '25 and '27, but the timeline has moved up, and therefore we see an increase in fiscal year '24 bond funding needs. Overall, the total Overall, the total project cost estimates has not gone up. We've only shifted the funds forward in time. Fire Station Number Two will require an increase of 1 million dollars to accommodate the acquisition and demolition of the Budget Inn on Williamson Road. No changes in funding needs for the Public Works Service Center wash house and refueling station at 345,000. A slight reduction in funding towards capital billing and maintenance rounding off the bond issuance to an even 1 million dollars. Due to inflationary increases in construction costs, the magistrate's renovation will require an additional increase of 196,000 for the total bond needs in fiscal year 24 of 851,000. The Commonwealth Attorney's Office renovation will include A and E in fiscal year 24 and is level funded at 200,000. And the last three items are all new projects and include cash funding of 150,000 dollars for the Hotel Roanoke Loggia, a covered concrete walkway between the hotel and the pedestrian bridge. A new multi-year phased approach towards underground storage tank replacements will require 170,000 dollars starting in fiscal year 24. And lastly, cash funding of 300,000 dollars plus annual operating needs of 25,000 will fund a new solid waste West End Downtown sealed trash compactor. As you can see from the originally planned approximately 36 million dollars in bonds, this revised plan manages to nearly hold level the amount of bonds issued. It utilizes about 5 million dollars in cash funding, which will come from sources already established through fiscal year 22 year-end funds and anticipated excess debt funding. And I'm almost done, and then you can have your questions. As we develop and refine this listing of priority projects for fiscal year 24 through fiscal year 28, we will bring you options for further discussions in March. Today was only meant to be an introduction to projects we anticipate moving forward with in fiscal year 24. I believe we are expecting our financial advisors to join us in March for their capital funding strategy update. Part of this strategy may include cash funds using one-time allocation of year-end surplus or excess debt service budget. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Trish White Boyd.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions, Paul. I started to say something earlier, but I didn't want to have you stop, but I wanted to go back to the Main Street Bridge.
There was a lot to get through.
Since we're going to issue that bond later, push it back into 2025, does that impact our start date on the bridge? Are we going to use some cash funds to go ahead and start the construction on that?
You're talking about the fiscal year 23, pushing that out?
Yes, yes.
No, that does not change the original...
Because you said you're going to reissue it in 2025, the bond?
Yes, so we have already issued bond funds in fiscal year 22, and then council has authorized the issuance of another 12. I think it was 7.5 million in 23. We've determined that we have enough bonds already issued in fiscal from fiscal year 22 to get us through fiscal year 24, so that the fund, the the bond funds that are already authorized in 23 are not actually going to be needed until 25.
25, okay.
And so, since council has already authorized them, we just will not issue it when it comes time to issue the bonds, and we will hold on to that resolution once we get to 25 and issue them at that time.
Just to see how much we need.
Yes, and that that saves us significantly in our debt service and will be very helpful.
And on the traffic modernization, I'm glad we're taking a look at that. You're only looking at 300,000. That's, I guess, just seed money. So really, 35 million, I was wondering how we were going to do that. That's a lot. Do we have an idea, Bob? No?
No, I mean, it, as Paul said, this is really an effort to do some of the preliminary engineering that will allow us to pursue some grants, because we will not be able to fund a scope of that magnitude with our local dollars.
Not even a fraction of that, that's a lot.
But that's, that's what that, that money is for, is to actually do some of the original engineering, so we can actually try to be more competitive for those grant dollars.
Yeah, hopefully we'll get some grants. And just the, on the fleet capital replacements, does those quotes include EVs or just all gas, or you tried to inflate it some for EV because it's so much more expensive?
Yeah, it would include the repla, and it depends on the vehicle. So, for example, several of the vehicles are the larger vehicles, like the ambulances, and I think we had an emergency management vehicle in there as well. Those obviously would not be electric. There aren't actually available electric units for those yet, but as we progress through, and one of the things I was going to highlight that Paul kind of alluded to is, and we've mentioned this before in some of our briefings, is if there is one significant gap still that we have not yet resolved on how we're going to address it from a capital standpoint going forward, it's fleet. The fleet, our fleet needs are growing to a point in which they're becoming quite expensive. Our first step was to actually issue debt, where before we were cash funding, we've issued debt, and that's beginning to kind of outpace itself. But EVs will continue to be a part of that mix and a part of that discussion. I think most of these are actually the larger vehicles for the, that are the priority purchases.
You did a really good job taking us through that and breaking it down for us. Thank you, Paul.
There was a lot to get through.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Minor, just a few comments and asking for clarification. On the Richardson Wayland, that's, we have 500,000 dollars in this year. That's an additional 500,000 dollars in 2024 that's being sought.
Yes.
Not moving the funds of the year that we're currently in.
That's correct.
Otherwise, I think I just have a few comments to make. First, make sure, sending thanks to Senators Kane and Warner for getting us the money for the Low Water Bridge and the congressional budget. Then regarding the, how do you pronounce it? Hotel Roanoke Loggia?
Loggia.
I hope that the hotel years locally would be considered, I brought it before, this idea of a tourism improvement district. I think that would allow them to find an alternative source of funds for projects like this, so they will have to find their way into our capital improvement projects. I think that there's a strong need for this sealed compactor in in West End. And finally, as it relates to Councilmember White Boyd mentioned earlier, that the traffic signal modernization, I think, is incredibly important. It was roughly probably three or four years ago around this time that the woman lost her life at Fifth Street and Campbell Avenue, and that one has still yet to be updated. And I knew at that time it was reported that it'd be a significant cost, but I believe later in the meeting, we're going to be talking about paving that goes right up to Fifth Street in that area, and I hope that that site will be considered.
Yeah, and the only thing I'll mention on the the hotel, just to make sure that it's clear with this, is, so the piece that we're talking about in his act, the only reason we're even involved in funding it is because it's the piece that connects between the pedestrian bridge and the conference center. If it were actually servicing the hotel, we would not be involved in it, so yeah. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that concludes our briefing. And again, just as, as we mentioned earlier, we'll be back again at the meeting at the first of March, where we'll start talking about the larger CIP that goes beyond the FY24, and then we'll get information from our financial advisors as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
All right, we have items now recommended for, for action. Okay. People going like, we ready to vote on them, but anyway, we'll go. Item A is deappropriation of Western Virginia Water Authority Fund for the Mary Rose Avenue There's one budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance deappropriating funding from the Western Virginia Water Authority, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2022, 2023 capital projects fund appropriations, and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Is there any discussion among councilmembers? Hurry and non, Madam Clerk, please call over.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones is out. Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Ah, and the budget ordinance passes, thank you. Item number B is the acceptance and appropriation of the Virginia ARPA Tourism Recovery Program Grant. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph, please?
A resolution accepting the Virginia ARPA Tourism Recovery Program grant funding to the city from the Commonwealth of Virginia through the Virginia Tourism Corporation, and authorizing execution of any required documents on behalf of the city.
Are there any discussion among members of council?
Just a, I don't know. But I don't know if Bob is to answer them, or if Landon Howard would be here to answer anything, or if it would be appropriate for him to.
We can, and I don't think Landon's here. Wayne can certainly, he's been our point person in here in the organization, so any questions?
It's really just a broad question that you might not be able to answer. It focused so much on where the targeted markets will be to solicit people coming in. I didn't know what, what media markets those were, if we were targeting certain cities that we're connected with, at certain airports, or if we're looking for a certain type of person to come here to, maybe for outdoor recreation. I don't know if you have any of that kind of information.
Yeah, and I can, I can...
And I'll follow up with Landon if not otherwise.
Yeah, and we've, and those discussions have taken place at the VBR board meetings, and they tend to focus around markets in DC, for example, is one of the definite markets. So they tend to be drive-in markets or markets that are connected to our Amtrak routes. So those have been the, the focus so far in those. They've, they've explored some of the further out markets, but then when you get further out, you start competing with other areas that, that we don't. So they've tended to be around Baltimore, around DC, and then again, wherever we're connecting on, on Amtrak as well. So that has tended to be, but, but certainly Landon could offer, I think, even more specifics with that.
Thank you, that's the only question I have.
All right. Madam Clerk, we're ready to call over.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones. Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Ah, and the resolution passes, thank you. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Virginia's American Rescue Plan Act ARPA Tourism Recovery Program, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2022, 2023 grant funds appropriations, and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, are there any questions for members of council? All right, seeing or hurrying non, Madam Clerk, call over.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Ah, thank you, and the budget ordinance passes. Item number C is the acceptance of the FY 2023 VDOT State of Good Repair Grant Award UPC's 12/1971 and 12/1977. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution. Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution accepting state of good repair funds from the Virginia Department of Transportation, and authorizing such additional action and execution of any required documents on behalf of the city in connection with such funds.
Are there any discussion or questions among members of council?
I just got a question, and it may have been more appropriate earlier when we're discussing CIP, but I think my brain registered it here. With where we are on our target, that city lanes paved for each year, and this is more a broad topic that was probably more appropriate for earlier, but I know these funds will help us get there a little bit quicker, but we've been behind for a number of years. Do we have any plan on the way to catch up on that generally, or otherwise relying on, you know, additional sources?
No, we've been, you know, we've been fortunate in the last probably three budget years. You all have been able to dedicate more funds that are non-VDOT funds in doing it. I think actually, when Paul was giving information, it was with a $4 million number came in, and we will continue to do that piece of it. Both of those sources still will not be enough for us to get to the pace that we really need to be at with those. So, short of somehow, you know, either identifying additional funds with that or VDOT increasing the fundings that come to municipalities, which is pretty unlikely, as I would describe that, we will, we will continue probably to fall behind. I shouldn't say fall behind, not catch up at the pace at which we would like to actually be catching up. This is one of those, you know, we've talked about this before, this is one of the significant differences between how we take care of our street network in, say, Roanoke County and Bodatah County, for example, where their street network is, is funded by, by VDOT. We're thankful for these dollars, but they certainly don't close the full gaps.
Well, I hope at some point we'll come up with some strategy, because once we get to the 20-year mark, how far behind we'll be. But otherwise, I just reiterate my comments that were made earlier about that Fifth Street intersection where this project debuts up to, that I hope that will be addressed at some point soon.
Yes, sir. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, with this paving on Campbell, we've known this has been coming for a couple of years. To follow up on what Councilman Pretty just talked about, do we anticipate major intersection work as well in terms of sidewalk accessibility along that, with this paving?
No, these projects, these are strictly paving projects. We will, as we do in other instances, look to see if there is opportunity to combine those, much like we've done with, like, say, bike lane additions and those types of things. But typically, these projects are for the paving surface itself, because those are what the dollars are allowed to be used for. But we will be looking, as we do in all of these, to see those other opportunities as well.
And do we know yet approximately when that might happen?
The paving itself, I don't know if we have a schedule for it yet. You know, we pave twice in a, in a given year. I don't know that these are spring paving projects, and you know?
It's probably due to the fall, but you...
Okay, so most likely the fall for it. And of course, the significance, the Campbell project that we're talking about, I mean, one of the significant items, obviously, that we have, that had been known from, from the beginning is the End Racism Now mural is, is there and always has been viewed as a temporary mural, knowing that this project was out there pending, and so this will, this will be that project, so.
Thank you.
Actually, that was my question, is what was going to happen to the End Racism?
Yeah, and that was part of what we discussed with the artists and the organizers when they first had the program, is this has been on the paving list for a number of years. And we've, and it was actually scheduled for the year that has been modified, so probably fall is when that will, that will take place.
All right, Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bob, I think last year there was some conversation about the paving, and there was going to be a list. Is that list available for the public to see?
There will be, yes, so there, it's not yet.
It's not out there now.
So, once we get all the funding squared away and we actually have our bids, what we'll do is, the Transportation Department creates that large list, and effectively, we work down that list based, with the contractor, based on the money. We rarely get all the way through that list, but, but yes, that list will be available. We provide to you, and it's posted publicly as well.
But you don't have a date as to when that's going to be?
No, and, and we won't, especially with those fall pavings. We also will not have on there, there won't be dates attached to when that paving will take place. That usually occurs about a month out, and that's when we start giving notice to folks of street closures and those types of things as well. But we should be pretty soon here, as we get into the spring, we should be generating that list so that it can get out there, because there will be some spring paving along with fall paving as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other question? If not, Madam Clerk, please call over.
All right. Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Ah, and the resolution passes. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, could you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance appropriating funding from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Transportation, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2022, 2023 capital projects fund appropriations, and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, go ahead. Is there any comments, questions about members of council? Hurrying non, Madam Clerk, call over, please.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones. Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Ah, and the budget ordinance passes. Item number D is the adoption of Roanoke Virginia Strategic Plan 2023 and 2024. There is a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Does it suck?
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you read the title of paragraph, please?
A resolution adopting the Roanoke-Virginia Strategic Plan 2023, 2024.
Thank you, Mayor, council, and just to sort of give you a quick overview, because I won't spend much time on this, because we've been talking about this for quite some time, actually going back to October. And of course, this is the update of the strategic plan. We try to update it every year. It effectively runs every couple of years. We typically do that just as a reminder for folks through a process that begins in September or October with the annual strategic plan retreat. That is then followed by the budget planning retreat, which further is the discussion. Then we have further discussion in January. A draft is provided typically in February and made available for comment, and then we come to this meeting with it as well. The strategic plan, of course, accompanies the comprehensive plan as our two key documents to guide forward budget expenditures as well as policy actions. And of course, the strategic plan is intended to be much shorter in timeframe and much more focused on action versus the comprehensive plan, which of course transcends kind of a 20-year period. I'm not going to go through the plan, because again, we've actually discussed it quite a bit, except that I do want to highlight some of the revisions that have been received in the comments that I've received from you all. Thank you for those comments. I just want to highlight some of those. Many of them were typos. I apologize for that. Luke had indicated that he was going to fulfill Mr. Best Pitch's role of catching typos, and you have done so, so thank you.
There are only nine.
There's only nine, that's right. But they all happened to be in one section, all at the same, all at the same time. But there are a few other items in here I wanted to kind of note as well, just to be clear. One item, obviously, that will be added to this document, of course, are the photographs of each of the council members. I know, I believe that took place today or is taking place today, so those will be added in after everything is done and the approval takes place. So let me just scroll in through here to show you any of the substantive sort of revisions. Again, most of what's identified in here tended to be typos, but I want to get to section, I think it was when we got into the education discussion. So in the education discussion, there were a couple of revisions in here as well dealing with, well, of course, mine doesn't have the, it's not showing the changes on there, is it? Let me grab my notes. Doesn't really help much, and it's not showing the changes.
I know what they are.
Well, you may have to actually tell those, Mr. Pretty, because for some reason it is not showing.
So you can tell from the red that it's marked on the side. At least the first of those two lines where it says enhance, it did include the words refine and enhance. And after reaching out to certain members of the school board, they weren't thrilled about the word refine, and I think enhance is more appropriate characterization of what will be happening there. And then just the addition of the line about continuing a partnership with goodwill to invest in the development of an adult high school, thought that that was important to add for the section under education.
Yeah, and we, and that one was added. It is technically part of our Northwest Hub, which otherwise in the document talks about continuing ARPA, but I think the importance was what was just noted, which is it's somewhat independent and separate from the rest of the ARPA project, because it's a goodwill-led effort and ties directly into that objective around education as well. I do also know that there was another fairly significant, we'll call it change over here in good government, that I'll turn to. Well, let me stop here first as well. There was also, in the targeted actions and infrastructure, there was the request to add, we've always had in here increased investments in street sidewalks and crosswalk maintenance, I mean, sorry, street sidewalk maintenance, and there was a request to add crosswalk maintenance in there as well. So that has been noted in the changed version as well. And then in the good government section, there was actually up in the goal. So we've had as, as the goal, we've had provide exceptionally competitive government services that are collaborative, transparent, responsive, and innovative. And there was a request to actually make that a little more action-oriented, a little more forward-thinking, and so resilient is the wording that has been added to that, to that item as well. And.
Where is that? It's page 18.
Page, yes. It's right at the very top of good government, the goal.
Responsible change of resilient.
And there were also a couple of additions in the action, the targeted actions for good government, so I'll mention some of these as well. One of those was the consultation with council-appointed bodies in the development of policy. So I simply added the where appropriate, because there are some governing bodies that that might not make sense, but where appropriate, where there is a consideration for the development of policy, that they be consulted. I'll give you a good example of that. We're having conversations about policy actions that could take place that advance affordable housing. Those would likely be routed through the Planning Commission for their input in their conversation. Same could be true with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. There may be a policy consideration that takes place that originates here, but that you would want to consult with the Prab in that case in terms of their information with it as well. Most of your appointed bodies are there to advise. Some are not really. They're there to take action. Think of the Human Service Advisory Board, for example, takes action. That's the reason for the addition of the where appropriate, just to make sure that was, that was clear as well. And also the addition of the last item on there, which was to increase opportunities for community engagement throughout the preparation and consideration of the annual legislative program. We've always used the public hearing at the end. I think the intent here, Mr. Pretty, is to actually have that same level of engagement all the way through the development of the process, I believe is what the effort was.
Or even just some level throughout the process.
So we'll have to obviously operationalize what that means next year, but that was certainly one of the additions as well. And I believe that was, really, those were the changes from what you had seen previously, and happy to answer any questions about what's in the plan. Again, we've seen it and talked about it quite a bit, so I don't want to go through all of the details, but happy to answer any questions and ultimately request your approval. And then, once approved, we'll put it into a final form, get the photos added, and then that's what will get posted up on the, up on the webpage. And then, of course, is part of what we use then to guide the rest of the development of the budget as we move forward as well. So, thank you.
Bob, I just have a question. Is the addition at the end on pages 24, those targeted actions are, that wasn't something that I found in the previous documents, at least for the previous years. Was this all developed in this year, around the organizational response? It would be further down.
Further down and for the organizational, yes, yes.
So all of these were added in this year?
Correct. All of those were added because we've had all of those. So we've had at the organizational side, within our own kind of plan of work, we've had those and felt like it would, it was better served to sort of highlight those out publicly, so that there was more clarity on the pieces that we're doing internally alongside what council is doing to advance on those same items.
And then I'll just have a final comment to make. Just thank you for developing this. I don't think you went over so much in detail all of the, you went over some of the changes you made from what we've seen before and what we've seen now, but you didn't really cover as much as all the positive changes that went from this between last year's plan and this year's plan. And this is something where the citizens can go and really look at, what is council looking at taking action on this year, where is somewhere that I can get involved in. And thank you for adding that language about involving our citizen boards. I think some of the comments that Frida had made earlier even point to, how is there a way that we can make sure that they feel engaged, and the city's done a better job with that, the mayor, in recent years. But that way, they're confident in the policy that we vote on.
Sure, no, that, happy to do it. And the, you know, and this, the additions from last year really are the continuation of what council started a couple of years ago. You all had indicated that, you know, three or four years ago, we didn't have a strategic plan. We created that, and then as it's evolved, you wanted to see more specific actions identified in there. So that's what we've been attempting to do, is to do that, so that there is clarity, so folks understand what it is that the council will be working on over the course of the next year, two years.
All right, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Bob, thank you for bringing the strategic planning process to city council. It was your leadership that helped us get this started and develop this. I think it's a really good plan. I was just wondering, is there a possibility, I don't want to over-report on this, but is there a possibility that maybe mid-year, we could get some updates? And one of the reasons I'm curious about that is that, and I'll give one example in community safety. I know that the Marcus Alert Program is due to start this summer. It's due to launch, and that would be a good time to not only update us on the launch of that, but any other action items that are taking place. So if that's possible.
Absolutely, we can do that. What I would, what I would do is I would continue to provide any relevant updates during the weekly updates, or sometimes it may result in a briefing here as well. But certainly, we can put kind of a mid-year point at which we come back and just do an overall check-in on how it is. Absolutely, we can do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Are we ready to call over on this item?
Yes.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Valison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones. Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tyrell. We're now down to comments from our city manager.
And I do have a couple. I'll try to be brief on these, because I know there's still business ahead and still more of our day. One of the items I wanted to do is, you all know, we talked about this a few meetings ago, Ms. Sanchez Jones and others at the recent National League of Cities Conference in Kansas City came across a program that they have operated that is a sort of a prescription discount program. It's actually a project coordinated between National League of Cities and CVS, but it actually is not just CVS pharmacies, it's other pharmacies all across the nation. It is a program that is at no cost to the city and is at no cost to our residents, and by which they can actually, when they present this card with either their prescriptions or their pets' prescriptions, it actually covers both humans and pets in there, they can receive fairly significant discounts on some of those. So we followed up with National League of Cities. National League of Cities and the CVS partnership worked with us to establish that, and we have received all of the information that we had requested. So I'll pass this around. What we have are, there's a couple of the posters that will be used. There are posters in English as well as in Spanish, and then I will send around also, these have not been opened yet, but they're just, they're the stacks of the information that goes in the flyer containers that we actually will receive as well. These are the actual cards that residents would use. So over the next couple, few weeks, we'll actually start the public awareness of this campaign, start distributing the information. Again, it will be in both English and Spanish, the cards, as well as the rest of the information, and we'll be working on getting those distributed. We have several thousands, so we have plenty of them to be able to do. So I'll pass these around just so you can see those as well. And again, the, you know, the program, it is good at 65,000 retail pharmacies nationwide, and there is up to 75% off of retail prices for certain prescription medicine. So certainly, there's more information online as well, that you can see what individuals have been able to save over the course of the program and its existence. So I'll pass these around so you all have a chance to look at those. So, thank you. The other item that I have, and again, I'll be brief with this, is I just wanted to give a little bit of an update on the Star City Recovery Fund. So this is our, this is the program that we've used first, it started with our CARES Act funding, and now, of course, is being used for the American Rescue Plan Act or the ARPA funding as well. And I had shared some of this information with you all. I realized as we have been working with ARPA and providing updates, we have a couple of council members who weren't here, obviously, when that project and that program moved its way through. So I wanted to get that information to you all, and I want to just touch on a couple of these things as ways in which to update and highlight folks. We are also in the process, we have been preparing and issuing a series of media releases that talk about some of these projects, so we can get more information out to community members as well. We actually have been asked by the National League of Cities, they're going to bring, they wanted to bring a crew here to actually record interviews, as well as some of the areas that we've done ARPA funding on, because they want to use it and combine it with other municipalities that they then will present to Congress about how these funds are being used in localities. So they will be here actually, I believe, next week in order to actually make that happen. So that'll be one more way that we can get additional information out. And then finally, we're working toward a mailer very similar to the mailer that we send out every year regarding the trash pickup and those kinds of schedules, which will detail in kind of an infographic way the investments that have been made through ARPA, and that will go to every household in the community so that they're aware of those items as well. So I just want to, again, mention a few items here, just as a reminder, the city received directly, or directly really passed through the Commonwealth, through the CARES Act, we received $17.2 million. That started in June of 2020. We also received through the American Rescue Plan Act, $64.5 million. That started in May of 2021, and that, of course, came in two payments of about a little over $32 million. We also have received, and actually, we'll be talking about a piece of this later this evening, special allocations around CDBG and ESG funding, which was additional federal HUD funding formula, it was formulated, funded, but sent directly to the municipalities for specific purposes, again, a part of which you'll be talking about later tonight. In addition to the funding that we received directly, CARES and ARPA funding also was provided to the Roanoke City Public School Division directly, as well as Valley Metro directly, as well as the airport, West Virginia Water Authority passed through, and VBR passed through, a piece of which you actually just dealt with as well. So even as significant as the $64.5 million we received, and the $17.2 million we received in CARES, there was at least that much more received through those other arrangements. My recollection is schools, for example, received a little over $50 million of ARPA funding that came through the ARPA Act, and the airport was significant in what they received as well. I'm not going to go into details about the CARES Act, other than to say in both instances, both for the CARES program as well as for the ARPA program, there was the formation by council of a citizen advisory group, each, in each instance, 36 individuals representing a variety of different interests and stakeholders and others, both cases co-chaired by the mayor and the vice mayor, and those recommendations were formulated and presented to council, and that's how we've been funding the projects as we've moved through. So that was true again with the CARES Act as well as with ARPA. On ARPA, I just want to kind of touch a little bit on, there were, the advisory panel made their recommendations back in September of 2021, and if you remember, the recommendations were in two phases. So the recommendation was to take about $48 million and begin implementing it based on those, with the also recommendation that a phase two, come back for further consideration with council. That took place in June of last year, where, so all of the funds have now been identified for their purpose with a couple of notable exceptions. I'll pick up kind of in the, in the end as well. And again, you all are very familiar with these, but those recommendations included that, you know, no more than $2.5 million be used for continued COVID mitigation measures, no less than $10 million be used on items including workforce skills development, enhanced mobility, violence interruption, food access, leadership development, health outcomes, no more than $1.5 million on grants to small businesses, social service nonprofits and arts and cultural organizations, no less than $25 million on the Northwest Hub, affordable and accessible safe housing, recreation center in the Gainesboro neighborhood hub, and then investments to cover replacement of lost revenue, upgrades in municipal facilities, and premium pay for essential workers. And then the information that I provided you broke down how those kind of broad general directions have been used in being able to expend those dollars. So a few examples of those include, obviously, we've entered into agreements with LEAP for food access. We've entered into agreements with the Greater Roanoke Workforce Development Board for the development of the Workforce Career Path Initiative, as was mentioned previously. We've entered into agreements, obviously, most significantly with Goodwill, who is actually developing out the Northwest Hub in partnership with us. We've entered into agreements with Habitat in Roanoke Valley for the development of affordable housing and job training programs, with the Build Smart Institute, as well as Family Promise, and several others. Again, I won't go into details, just wanted to hit kind of those highlights. That was phase one. Phase two was the, again, came to council in June, and that's where we talked about things that were recommended as well, including $5 million being invested toward addressing homelessness, a part of which you'll be, again, talking about this evening, $2 million to match the Commonwealth funding for the shared lab space. That was the press release that went out recently from the governor's office. That $2 million leveraged an additional $16 million coming in to actually build the shared lab space with Virginia Tech and Johnson Labs. $1 million invested in capital maintenance for Park Roanoke due to lost revenue, $2 million invested into deferred park maintenance, of which approaching half of that has already been spent, and the rest will now take place in the spring. $300,000 invested with DRI for the Downtown Ambassador's Program. That's two years' worth of funding for that program. $250,000 invested in tree planting for heat island mitigation, $2 million invested in the In River Kayak Park, which is actually in design currently, $2 million for Belmont Fallon Target Area enhancements that will come out of that planning process. process. $2 million invested in mental behavioral health care. And then the one item that is still yet to be funded, somewhere between $2 and $5 million, you may recall, we held back because we still didn't know what was going to happen relative to COVID. And the intent was somewhere in the June-July timeframe to come back and talk about how those dollars will be allocated. So we'll be doing that again as we move forward. And at that point, then all of our ARPA dollars, with the exception of the interest earned that we talked about, will then be dedicated. And we'll either decide at that time in consultation with you all how to address the interest earned, or that'll be another item we come back and address as well. Because that will be somewhat of a moving target as we continue to earn interest as these dollars get spent. So that's a really quick overview. All of the documents that I refer to in terms of the advisory panel recommendations, the CARES closeout information is all up on the website where the COVID information has been. And happy to answer any questions. And again, the press releases and some of the other items that will be coming forward over the next few weeks will provide even more insight into that. But just wanted to give a little bit of more information and more briefing, particularly for the council members who are not here at the time that we went through those advisory panel recommendations. But happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Cal, you mentioned a kayak park. Where is that going to be?
Sure. So that is the, so we refer to it as the Wasina Kayak Park. But it is basically, if you know where the Greenway crosses the river on the bridge in Wasina Park.
Down by where we, where the, where Ramada, oh, where Wayland, oh, where Wayland off of Memorial. Okay, at Memorial, where Parks and Rec's headquarters is going.
It's close to that and kind of over by, behind like Black Dog Salvage, kind of that area.
Okay.
So there's two sections in there that will actually be used as part of the kayak park, one that is upstream from that bridge and one that is downstream from that bridge. So those, that's where that will be focused in that area. And there actually were, this came out of a plan that was adopted regionally, that actually identified three different locations for those. This was one of them. One of them is in Explore Park in the county, and the county so far has not been able to advance on that effort. And then one was actually identified in, on Tinker Creek and has actually since been determined that it wasn't one that would easily be done. It was where the dam is in that area, Mason's Mill and stuff in that area. But that's where it will be located. The design is underway currently, and I just today actually signed off on the Corps of Army Engineers, Army Corps of Engineers permitting process because that will be the longest part of that process, is to go through the permitting portion of that.
And will you be looking at anywhere over there by where we demolished Ramada Inn? Will you be looking at?
No, it will not go that far. Now, the Wiley Bridge that we just talked about in the CIP will allow us to elevate that bridge up out of the creek, which will allow watercraft to actually pass through there, which will remove one of the barriers in that location. But there's nothing associated with this park.
And that's the low end for Wiley Drive?
Correct. You still have the upper end that will still be.
Right, so this is the lower one, okay.
Yeah, in some ways, that will function still as kind of a takeout area as they work their way down from this, from this park area. They can either take out right by the, right past the bridge, or actually take out at that bridge location, that low water bridge location.
Yeah, okay. And the last question I have with regards to Goodwill and where they're at and everything that they're doing, how much of the ARPA money have we given them?
So they actually, once the MOU is signed, they receive all of the funding.
So they'll get the 10, is it 10 million?
Yes, yes.
Okay, they get it upfront?
Correct, correct. Yep. And they are, and I've provided you all with some updates on where they are. So they have issued a series of RFPs to secure several things, from designers to folks that will operate the financial institution, to beginning actually the work on even ordering the supplies. They have learned that some of the supplies that will be necessary for the grocery store, think of things like walk-in coolers and stuff, have, you know, a 12-month to 18-month lead time. So they've already started ordering some of that equipment. So, and there's, of course, legislation working its way through tied to the high school as well that Mr. Pretty talked about earlier.
Yeah, sounds good. Thank you.
Sure.
Let me ask, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Bowles.
I was just wondering about the Gainesboro Hub and some of the, we have money set aside for that and what that might be looking like in the future because of the issues.
Yeah, so there's two things with the Gainesboro Hub. One of those, as you all know, we had an effort that we undertook and made quite a bit of progress on, but were unable to actually complete, which was to actually acquire the Claytor Clinic property and redevelop that property. That was unsuccessful. So since that time, we've done two things. We have continued to identify other properties that may make sense for acquisition and have continued to have those conversations. We also have, and it was just completed last week, had a consultant, the same consultant that did our Neighborhood Centers Plan, has focused with the neighborhood there on a plan just for the Gainesboro Hub. They just finished that work last week, so we're currently reviewing it. They'll go back out to the community and present that. And then I think that will actually guide a lot of the investment that will take place in the hub area. And this week, you'll actually be getting a copy of that as well. We just, I think Friday is when we received it, so.
Thank you.
All right.
I just want to clarify on one statement you said earlier about Parks and Recreation spending the second half of the funds. That money's already been decided that where it's going towards in deferred projects. It's just the spending is underway.
Correct, correct. Yes, so they, they have about $2 million. They've already identified all the projects that they're going to go toward. They were, before the winter came, they were able to get about $750,000 worth of that work completed. Now they'll finish the rest of the work. And that was on, that should, I should note, that was in addition to the nearly $2 million that preceded that as well. So there's been two different investments that the Parks Department's been able to make on everything from courts to parking lots to fences to any number of other playground replacements and so on.
All right. Real quick, I want these citizens sitting here, or just the cities, we're going to get to you all very quickly. But last week I read that the Department of Justice is going to give $531 million to cities for ballots. Are we getting any of that or do you know of anything?
Yeah, I mean, some of that, in the past, some of that has been routed through the, either the Attorney General's Office or the DCJS. And so some of the grants that we have received have been from grants from the Department of Justice. Some of those have been also through the state's allocation of ARPA dollars. I would expect that this would be handled similarly. It would be pretty unusual that they would create an avenue where we would apply directly with DOJ. Most likely, it'll come through those other resources. But we certainly will be looking at those as well.
Okay. And let me just say, and help me with these acronyms, I just want the new council members to know that the way we handle the advisory group and looking at these funds that we have was recognized nationally in terms of our approach to it, the fact that we put together a citizen advisory group of about 36 citizens. And we got a, I know I was, and I was on the board of directors for, excuse me, I tell you again so much.
National Civic League was that.
National Civic League, NCL, National Civic League. They wrote and mentioned that, and they want a copy of how we did that. So I just want to make sure that part is brought in in terms of us nationally, how we got together, because there were a lot of cities that did this closed-door meeting process and come out and said, this is what we're doing and this is how we're going to do it. But Roanoke, we brought these citizens together and they directed us in terms of what they wanted to do. I mean.
And it's one of the reasons why the National League of Cities is interested in coming here and highlighting the projects, because they want to be able to convey back to Congress not only the good work that has been done here, but also the way in which we got to that good work as well.
So I wanted to mention that. Thank you. And Madam Clerk, you got to help me now. We're going, we're on.
Thank you.
City eight, item eight.
Yes, Attorney.
All right, Amendment of the City Code.
That's right.
To update Section 2-307 of Youth Athletics Review Board. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
An Ordinance Amending and Reordaining Chapter Two Administration, Article 14, Authorities, Boards, Commissions, and Committees Generally, Division Two, Permanent Committees and Boards, Section 2-307(c), Youth Athletics Review Board, Code of the City of Roanoke, as amended, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right. A discussion, council members. All right, hearing none, Madam Clerk, call the.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the ordinance passes. Thank you. Item 2B is approval of the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against multiple distributors and their related corporate entities. There's an ordinance, budget ordinance. I'm sorry, an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
All right, is it second?
It's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Let me make sure I'm with you now. I have.
It's a resolution.
But I have an ordinance.
It's a resolution.
Okay. All right, Madam Clerk, you read the title paragraph?
No, sir, I haven't read it yet. I will read it. A resolution approving the City of Roanoke's participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against Teva, Allergan, Walmart, Walgreens, CVS, and their related corporate entities, and directing the city attorney to execute the documents necessary to effectuate the city's participation in the settlements.
All right, is there any discussion among the council?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just to again remind, certainly council, you're already aware of this, but also anyone else that is watching this as well. So with all of these opioid settlement dollars, of course, they're all ultimately flowing through the opioid abatement authority. And one of the things that we'd indicated that we would be doing is bringing back to council, much like we just kind of walked through with ARPA, is sort of an idea, think of it as a CIP, if you will, for the expenditure of those dollars over the next few years. The reason that we need to do that is because we need to submit any requests that we have and how we will use those dollars and/or how we will seek grants by May 5th. So somewhere, so that will be coming up very soon. We will continue to rely upon the collective response blueprint as our guide, but certainly we want to bring back to you all prior to that May 5th deadline, the proposals of how those dollars will be spent. And of course, as city attorney knows, those dollars continue to move in flux as settlements are reached as well. So it'll continue to evolve, I think, each year as we move forward.
Any further discussion?
And Mr. Mayor, if I can tip of the hat to our city manager, he's proposing at least to, as, Mr. Mayor, you know, I'm on the opioid abatement authority, and the opioid abatement authority has developed what it calls the gold standard for utilization of these funds. And if a locality holds itself to this gold standard, then there is a 25% bonus, if you will, to locality. And I want to tip my hat to our city manager. He has embraced that idea, as well as the idea of reaching out to our community on how these monies are to be spent. But once we collect the funds, then the city manager will make the recommendation to council.
Okay. Let me ask you a question, Ms. Spencer. How is that coming regionally? Regionally, are you getting any requests regionally for?
Yes, we are. And that's where the city manager's already started to work with some other localities or our regional efforts to try to fund that. And I'll defer to Mr. Cal. He can talk about how he's already reaching out and creating those partnerships.
So there is, the funds, there's several buckets of funds, but to keep it simple, one of the most significant buckets is funding that comes to us. And we still have to actually propose how we would use those funds to the opioid authority by May 5th or at May 5th. And we will, we will be doing that piece of it. The grant side of things, though, is discretionary, and so we could apply and receive additional funds. Those, all the grant requests have to be regional in nature. They have to involve at least two, two local levels of government as you work through those. So we are having those conversations, both through the Regional Commission and the collective response portion of it. And there's actually a meeting coming up in early or mid-March that's focused also on anything that we might want to regionally do around any kind of response to the Catawba Hospital, for example. So there's several discussions that are going on. We are also interested, as you all know, currently, we're using ARPA dollars to fund the collective response staff for the entire region. We're doing that here. We would certainly like to talk regionally, and that's a piece of the conversation we're having as well, how regionally we pull together some of our opioid dollars, because every municipality is receiving funds through this program to sustain that effort going forward. Good thing is, you can commit those dollars to a five-year window, so you can do it for a fairly long time. So that would provide some predictability for the Regional Commission with it as well. So a lot more work to go with it, but there definitely is an emphasis on regional approaches with most of this. And good thing is, our blueprint was crafted regionally, so all of the projects that are in there have a regional slant to them as well.
Okay. Well, thank you for your work on that. I know we talked about that at a luncheon I was in several months ago about that. And thank you also, Ms. Spencer, for your work on that and being at the table in our discussions that went on with opioid, so that helps us. One other question while I'm on this subject. Do we get reports of people who pass from overdoses or die?
We know the, we know the numbers. So the numbers are reported through, I think the Department of Health collects that information. And I've actually used this statistic before, that the number of folks who pass away in our community from overdoses, and the number of folks who pass away in our community due to suicide, both exceed the number of people that are impacted by individual gun violence. Now, some of those folks that actually pass away by suicide, of course, are by gun, but those numbers are significantly higher in our community and are increasing, particularly in the area of overdoses. That was, matter of fact, there is, I think you all have been provided the white paper that the collective response actually crafted. And it was looking specifically at the increase that was during the COVID period of time, and it was pretty substantial in those numbers. And we are not unique. This is true in Roanoke County and in Salem and in Bodata County as well, really across the entire Commonwealth. But yes, we do have access to those numbers. There's some delay in when those come out, but it's only in cumulative numbers, obviously.
Okay. Well, anything I asked, I got, I've talked to lady in the community I was familiar with, and she said, did you know my son overdosed over the weekend and passed on him because of that? I didn't, but those numbers are quite high. That's tragic. All right, where are we, Ms.?
We're ready for the roll call.
Good, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the resolution passes. All right, Madam Clerk, where are we on the agenda now?
I believe the city attorney has a walk-on now.
Have a walk-on item that's before you, Mr. Mayor. It's one, and apologize, with the new system, when there's an error and it's 100% on there and we find there, the only thing that we can do is remove it and walk it on right now, but we're still learning.
Okay.
So this is one that I've worked with council member Trish White Boyd on, and this amends the code, it's a code amendment for the Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board that removes council members from that board, reducing the total number from nine to seven, and then further defining that at least one public hearing will be held a year and that it will be held within the city, within the city outside of the building. So we'll go out to the people, so to speak. So we have that ordinance and then attached there, when the, it was originally established, none of the terms for members of the, for the, sorry, Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board were staggered. So I've developed a resolution and worked with the members to stagger those terms so that we won't have everyone going off the board at the same time and coming on the board at the same time. So this addresses those issues. These two measures are, were presented to council at our last council meeting, and ask council to consider adoption of these two items.
So you have to move the ordinance? Do I need to read the whole thing or is that?
Simply, I think if we can read the title paragraph should be sufficient.
Yeah, these were presented at the last meeting, so they are available to be seen. You have to move the ordinance.
Second.
All right.
Okay. I'll read the ordinance. An ordinance amending and reordaining Section 2-305 Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board, Division Two Permanent Committees, Article 14, Authorities, Boards, Commissions, and Committees Generally, Chapter Two Administration, Code of the City of Roanoke as amended, establishing an effective date and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right. Do you want to call the names of those individuals that are on the board now?
They'll have to be during the, during the resolution.
Hold on, I can't, one, one at a time. Let me have.
Then they'll be during the next item. This is the ordinance first.
Okay. All right, any discussion? Okay. All right, Madam Clerk.
All right. Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Ms. Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. Thank you. Ms. Spencer and Ms. Boyd, for your work on this, doing this.
Mayor, I make a motion to move the resolution appointing the seven members to newly constituted Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board for an initial term, and waiving the residency requirement for several individuals, and, and setting forth and establishing an effective date.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Okay, I will call the roll on that, on this resolution. Ms. White Boyd.
Would there be any discussion?
Well, let me read the resolution. How about that?
Yeah, yeah.
I repeated.
Does any member move, revert it back to her days?
Yeah, I did, I did, so they would know the resolution was being moved.
All right, where are we, Madam Clerk?
I will, I'll feel more comfortable just reading it now, so we'll put it on the record, please.
Okay.
All right. A resolution appointing the seven members to the newly reconstituted Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board for an initial term waiving the residence requirement for several individuals and establishing an effective date.
All right.
So, do we need to say all nominees, or just aye on this?
If you could say aye on this, we'd be glad to have the clerk read the individual, individuals on this, just so that the public will know.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I want the public, and, yeah, I think that's where we need to do it, Madam Clerk.
Okay. I will read, a city council hereby appoints the following seven individuals to serve the following terms as members of the Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board. Dr. William L. Lee, March 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2023. Angela S. Penn, March 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2023. Patisse Holland, March 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2023. Darrell Rhodes, March 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2024. Peter Watson, March 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2024. Kaitlin Johnson, March 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2025. Faison, Faison Nash, March 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2025. Angie O'Brien, non-voting city liaison.
And, Mr. Mayor, this, adoption of this resolution, council will be waiving the residency requirement for Patisse Holland and Kaitlin Johnson.
Okay. All right. Do we need to do anything on this, Madam Clerk?
I will call the roll, and then you can say, well, you can just vote. I will do that now. Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. Thank you, and the resolution is approved. All right, Madam Clerk, are we down, down to reports of committees? All right, item eight, one is reported, Roanoke City School Board requesting appropriations of funds for various educational programs, and report of the city manager recommending the council concur in the request. Donna Caldwell is director of accounting and is spokesperson. There's the budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth, federal and private grant for various educational programs, amending and re-ordaining certain sections of the 2022, 2023 school grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion, members of the council? Madam Clerk, you're here, and please call a roll.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones. Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. Thank you, and the budget ordinance is approved. All right, right now, let's, well, I will hear the, are there any reports of certain authority boards and committees and commissions in which city councils serve as liaisons or representatives?
I just have an, an announcement.
Is that going to be?
It's just a little, little blurb. It was an invitation, Roanoke Housing asked me to extend to the council.
Okay.
If I may.
Is that, that it?
Yes, it is just an invitation. Roanoke Redevelopment Housing would like to extend an invitation to the mayor and members of city council to attend the kickoff event for Roanoke Valley Saves Week. It will be held at the Roanoke Division Center on next Monday, February 27th, at 12:00 noon. This is a great opportunity for people in the community to learn about Roanoke's Financial Empowerment Center and to reclaim financial autonomy from debt. The residents in attendance will be able to set up a no-cost financial counseling session. There will also be refreshments and a gift card raffle. That's it.
All right, any other? Thank you.
Just from the legislative committee, that some version of the Goodville legislation has progressed through both chambers. I believe both pieces of legislation, and they're on their way to the governor.
All right, Madam Clerk, remind me at some point, when are we scheduling me with the housing authority?
We haven't said that yet, but I will give that information to you.
All right, I'd like to, to meet with them as soon as we can schedule that. All right, I'm going to move some things around, because I, these ladies and gentlemen have been sitting here looking at me for a while. And I see the expression on their faces, as we go, thank you for your patience, and I know former Councilman Bill Bestbitch has been here, and he's been in and out here, so I want to go ahead and move that, because we could be here for a little while longer on other things. So I'm going to go to item 11, down to Sister Cities Letter. I want to talk about that. Do you have that?
Yeah.
All right. I'll have the Vice Mayor to lead the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'd like to introduce and actually invite up Mary Jo Fossey, who's the chair of the Roanoke Valley Sister Cities Board, and Bill Bestbitch, who is treasurer. And I think it would be helpful for them to share how the board arrived at a letter that they would like to present to us today for affirmation from the council.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's good to see you.
It's good to see you.
Especially from this side of the podium. My name is Bill Bestbitch, and it's my pleasure to serve as treasurer of Roanoke Valley Sister Cities, Inc. As the Vice Mayor had pointed out, our president, Mary Jo Fossey, who I think most of you know, is also with us today. From the beginning, Roanoke Valley Sister Cities' connections with our seven sister cities on four continents have focused on building people-to-people relationships. One of the basic premises of Sister Cities International is that we do not take positions on political issues. For example, the president and governor, and the city council for that matter, may have concerns about the government of China. I'm sure that those of you who were on council at the time remember the many emails we received essentially demanding that we sever our ties with Li Zhang due to some supposed connection with the Chinese Communist Party. Sister Cities was fortunate to have Vice Mayor Cobb represent us during a trip to Li Zhang several years ago, and we are still hoping to help support a visit by Li Zhang artist and his family for an artist-in-residence program sometime soon. That plan does not indicate that we approve or disapprove of any level of the government of China. As an organization, we have no opinion. Shortly after Putin sent the Russian army to attack Ukraine, this council adopted, and I quote, "A resolution supporting the people of the sovereign nation of Ukraine and condemning Russia's violent, unwarranted, and inhumane invasion of Ukraine." Not long after, Governor Yonkin requested that any Virginia city with a sister-city connection with any city in Russia terminate that relationship. Mr. Mayor, you sent the governor an eloquent letter explaining why Roanoke did not consider that to be wise or helpful at that time. On January 10, some members of the Roanoke Valley Sister Cities Board of Directors met with representatives of the Ukrainian community in our area, a couple of whom are with us today. Their anger, fear, and especially their pain were palpable. Their major request was for removal of the Russian flag from Pearl Fu Plaza. The president of Sister Cities committed to including a discussion of the issues at the upcoming board meeting on February 7. The board did not take this decision lightly, but ultimately approved removal of the Russian flag and adoption of the letter you are considering today as a joint statement from the City of Roanoke and Roanoke Valley Sister Cities, continuing the cooperative relationship that we have enjoyed ever since the beginning with a connection with Wonju, South Korea in 1964. Please note that the letter makes no commitment to re-establishing a relationship with the people of Skopje. If you approve the letter, we will attach a laminated copy to the Skopje sculpture in Century Plaza, as well as remove the flag. Frankly, we don't know whether it will be possible to interact and communicate with our counterparts in Skopje at some future time. Perhaps a new regime in Russia, in Moscow someday will be more supportive of relationships between the people of Russia and the people of other countries around the world, or perhaps not. Whatever come, we look forward to more collaboration between the City of Roanoke and Roanoke Valley Sister Cities for years to come. I'd be happy to take any of your questions. Oh, and I want to thank the clerk, Ms. Susan McCoy, for developing this wonderful stationery that has the logo of the City of Roanoke on the left and the logo of Roanoke Valley Sister Cities on the right, so it's very clear that we are united in our, in the statement that the letter makes.
Bill, would you be willing to read the letter?
Oh, yes, certainly.
So that the public is aware of what's in it?
The letter is only addressed to whom it may concern. Roanoke Valley Sister Cities, Inc. is committed to fostering and encouraging mutual understanding, friendship, and peace. As the unprovoked and unwarranted invasion of Ukraine has continued for nearly a full year, I think it's only about three more days until it is a year. RVSCI and the City of Roanoke are pausing all interac, interaction and communication with our counterparts in Skopje at this time. In support of our Ukrainian community in the Roanoke Valley, we are removing the Russian flag from Pearl Fu Plaza for the time being. A copy of this letter will be attached to the Skopje sculpture in Century Plaza, and it's to be signed, if you approve it, by Mayor Lee and President, Mary Jo Fossey.
May I, Vice Mayor, comment?
Oh, I, I just, in terms of.
Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Do we need to make a motion to affirm the letter and then have discussion? Or receive the letter? What's the, the best language?
I think a motion to affirm the letter would be appropriate, and then a second, and then council can have discussion.
Mayor, I would move that we affirm the letter from Roanoke Valley Sister Cities Incorporated Board.
Second.
All right. Now we're open for a discussion. Let me just, I just want to make the point. I struggle with this. I struggle harder with this, because I agree, and, and I'll keep calling you councilman, but Mr. Bestbitch and I, we talked about this, and I agree that we should maintain the tie, not get caught up in the political issues that are going on. However, I tell you, when I look at what's happening to Ukraine, and is not relenting, matter of fact, or getting ready to even go with this, I think, mild, wild man in Russia, and, and I agree with the Vice Mayor. I think that's a crime against humanity, what's occurring. I mean, you're blowing up buildings with children in it. You're blowing up buildings, and, and I commend our president for going over there to encourage the citizens there, but that man in Russia, the president over there, is determined to do what he can to inflict pain and agony on people. People are dying. Americans are going over there sacrificing their lives to help the people. I struggle to just say anything with Russia on it to keep it going, but I, I do recognize where we are with our Sister Cities program, and we, we, my first thought was to just say, Skopje, I understand some of our citizens may not, I mean, a number of Russian citizens may not agree with what's going on, but I was just at the time wanting to send a hard message out that, okay, Russia comes up, we're cutting it off. We're relentless. And as many of you know, the, the governor of this state called myself and the, I mean, called my office and also the mayor in Norfolk to sever our ties with it, with that. And I backed up at the time, that wasn't the way we wanted to go. And I struggle right now, because I just, every night you see how tough it is, people living in holes, sirens going off, grabbing children, children, and, and purposefully bombing places where people are, hospitals, apartments, and that's against every, every rule or policy that it is in terms of war. But this guy is relentless, and I, I struggle with it, and that's why I first, and I reported to the media, my first reaction was, no, I want to sever all our ties with Russia, because it doesn't seem like they are making an effort to, to try to resolve this issue. It's just, we're going to teach them a lesson, and that's so tough, so. I, I'll stand by what we're doing now and then doing that, but it's, it's, it's tough. It's really tough to do that, because I feel so bad for those people who are having to go through it, and to know that, well, they're lining up tanks and bombs and getting ready to go again. They're getting ready to come back again, and you're going to see more people die. More people die, and I look at the families, and I think, what would that be if I'm in that country and knowing my son or daughter, and knowing that we could be blown apart at any time? Because let's be real, Russia is, is bigger, they're more sophisticated, and they're going to use those kinds of things. So it, it just, it's really hurting, and so I just wanted to make that comment and let it be known. I recognize Mr. Volz.
I'd like to thank the Ukrainians here today for your strength, not only coming here to talk to us, but to go to the sister cities and tell them how you're feeling about this. You know, I don't see this as political, I see this as humanitarian. We shouldn't be having ties with countries that are, are just going in and killing people for no reason. I understand that, you know, Putin is a political figure, but unfortunately, they're continuing to do what they are doing, and that. to do what they are doing, and that is about, sorry, I get a little emotional about this because my husband is a European, and I know that this has also created a lot of uncertainty in Europe as to what's going to happen next. I think we also have to look at our own country as what's going on here in the United States. We have huge inflation. That's not just because of COVID. It's because of, of the war that was started in Ukraine, and that affects our people here in Roanoke as well. I would like to recommend to the Sister Cities that there be some kind of process for deciding whether to sever ties or whether to restart ties, and especially in this case, I think we're, we're severing those ties. So what would it look like if we ever want Skov to become a sister city again? What would those requirements be?
Well, thank you, Mr. Volson. What we are really proposing at this point is that we pause. Now, the reality is, we have no communication or interaction with anybody in Skov right now and have not been able to for about a year now. So we understand that. You know, if you look at the history of Russia and the Soviet Union, they seem to find ways to push certain leaders out and replace them with somebody who has a different mindset. I don't have a crystal ball any more than any of you do, but I cannot believe that there are not people in the government and in the military who are strongly considering the fact that this cannot go on. It only makes logical sense. This cannot go on. What are we gaining? So it will not surprise me. And at that point, if we're able to reestablish connections with people over there, we'll find out. But we really, as I said, without a crystal ball, I can't say today what will happen or not happen. I just, I just don't think that, and I think that it's, it's very important for us to recognize, Mr. Mayor, that, that America is being joined by our allies in the free world very strongly, especially those in Europe. And yes, Russia's a bigger country and may have more armaments, so forth, but when all of the allies come together and support Ukraine and provide the military equipment and munitions and so forth, you know, that's a very strong commitment that I think, again, has to be getting through to some of the other people who are in the hierarchy of the Russian government. You know, these people are not gonna stop. The president of the United States does not just pick up and go right into a war-torn area. That doesn't happen. But he did it. He did it, and I think that sends a very strong message that the United States of America is never gonna forget the people of Ukraine, never forget the tragedy of bombing hospitals and apartment buildings, not trying to stop military operations, but violating every convention of war in international law to further a scheme that doesn't even make sense. So I really think, you know, I wish I had an exact answer today. I wish I knew when this is gonna end, and I, I know my friends here wish they knew when their friends and family back in Ukraine are gonna feel safe again, but today we don't know.
While you're at the podium, another recommendation that I have is for, you know, just throwing it out there, you guys are your own organization, but where the Russian sculpture is in Pearl Fu Plaza, I was wondering if y'all might fly a Ukrainian flag or draper Ukrainian flag on the sculpture during this time.
Well, you know, shortly after the resolution, the city council adopted the resolution I referred to earlier, we did raise the Ukrainian flag in Freedom Plaza, right across the street. We put the Virginia State flag underneath the United States flag because no flag of another country can be flown on the same pole as a, as American, our national flag or state flag, so we, we put it on the other pole. We are going to, as I said, laminate a copy of this letter and I guess punch a couple of holes in it, run, run something around, and put that on the sculpture that's over there, so anybody who sees that is gonna know.
One of the reasons I think we need to do a little more is that we have to realize that Skov is actually where the Butchers of Bucha are from. And there has been a lot of, you know, there is a special military unit that is stationed in Skov, and those are the ones that did a lot of this. And so I think it's, it's one thing to just put a, a letter on there that says, hey, we don't, we're not doing this anymore, and there's another to show real solidarity about the atrocities that were done by folks from this city.
I'm not sure I can completely agree, Mr. Volson, with your statement, folks of this city. You know, we have a special operations force.
No, no, no.
We, we have a special operations force called Delta at Fort Bragg in North Carolina. If some crazy president was to send them off on some mission to attack another country that we totally disagreed with, we would not blame all the people in Fayetteville, North Carolina for, for the fact that, that they're doing that. It's not, it was not the decision of the people in Russia. It was not the decision of the people of Skov to, to have the military installation base there. They didn't have any, any say in the matter. So I think there's, I, I know for a fact, actually, that there are lots of people who have said, if you combine blue and yellow, the colors of the Ukrainian flag, you get green. So they've taken green ribbons and silently tied them many places all around the city to show their disapproval of what's going on. I'm sure, I'm, you know, be honest, I, I'm sure that there are people in every city in Russia. In fact, I heard something just last week on National Public Radio about the, how well the Rus, the Russian propaganda machine has convinced much of the Russian public that there is some threat to their sovereignty. Really? But apparently they, they have a good propaganda.
I would also say that there's actual clear evidence that was presented by the New York Times that did an eight-month investigation into the Butchers of Bucha and found that they lived in Skov. Not that it was a unit from Skov. They do have a base in Skov. That's, I know that because of my husband, but that's not who I'm talking about. Who I'm talking about is folks that have been investigated. There is a clear link from them being in Bucha and clear link to them being in Skov and residents of Skov, and that needs to be addressed and needs to be looked at when we're looking at this. If we had...
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, but what is the motion that's before us?
Well, to...
Affirm this letter.
Agreed to the letter.
Yeah, affirmation.
Just wanted to get back to the content of that.
Well, uh, well, thank you, Mr. Pretty. I mean, I think that we are doing what we can do at this point. I certainly wish we could do more to put a stop to what's going on, whether they're from, you know, they've, they've spent thousands of soldiers into Ukraine. They didn't all come from any one city. They come from all over. We also know that thousands of young men have fled the country fearing that they're gonna be conscripted to fight in a war that they do not support. So I, I think as a practical matter, if we could do more, we would, but right now, this is what we can do.
And I think as a practical matter, putting a letter on that sculpture is not enough, and that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, any members of council have any more concerns?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question and then just some brief comments.
Okay.
A question about, I understand the taking down of the flag and the, the posting of the letter. There's also a gallery talk that was scheduled to take place on May 15th, and that one has, it will be canceled as a result of this action. Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to clarify with my question. And then just a, a few comments that this is a very serious matter, and I do think it's important that we take the lead from our organizations that we have partnerships with, like the Sister Cities, that they'll continue to weigh what should be done in the future on this matter to, to bring to council, I expect, in the future. And I talked to my mom last night to look into her ancestry stuff because I know that she is full-blood Ukrainian on her side, and I've never known much of that history. And much of what I was told last night is that her family in the late 1800s, early 1900s were being persecuted because they were Russian Orthodox and they converted to practice Anabaptism, where people are, are baptized as adults, and that they were ultimately imprisoned, but they were smuggled out by peasant farmer Jews who were able to get them somewhere, and they ultimately ended up homesteading in North Dakota, and then eventually my mom came along. So there is a personal piece of it here, but I do think it's so incredibly important that the action that we take, and I understand, because I read your words, and what you must have happened to gone through to take back a step from what you would like to do, but that we're affirming something that a local organization is recommending that has a direct tie to what should be done, and hopefully in the future, we'll figure out if there's a, a different action that needs to be taken as it relates to this. But as this letter is before us, I, I think it's appropriate, and I think the action that's put forward is appropriate.
Thank you. Any other comments? No statement? Okay. All right, you need to call a roll on that, do we affirm the letter?
Yes. Sister Cities. Ms. Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Volson.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. All right. Thank you all. Sorry we had to go through a lot to get here, but appreciate you all coming on. Thank you.
We got to see how all the action worked. Now we're not...
All right.
You gotta do it again, right, this evening?
Yeah.
Is it the same thing?
We're not done yet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we got, we're done that, oh, man, I'm clear. Okay. Welcome back, Bill. Wanted to make you feel at home, so...
Thank you, Mr. Bestfitch.
Come back anytime.
And thank you, Mayor Joe.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
For reading the letter and considering, yes, appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Do we, we've already voted, so I'm going down now to item eight, nine, 10.
Okay, let's see here, where are we?
To miscellaneous and miscellaneous business.
Yes, yes, yes.
Do we have any inquiry of the comments by members of council? All right, we'll go to the item...
Are we gonna do that before curfew?
Oh, we're just going through. If you've got something, we're gonna take it in order.
Yeah, I mean, I've got a few announcements and, and things to... The, the first is that March 16th, there'll be a public meeting at the Winston Link Museum that starts at 6:30 regarding the review and revision of 2023 History and Social Science Standards of Learning. That has been in the news a bit recently. The, the second one is that we received a communication that was forwarded to us that Evans Springs, evenspring.com is now live, and it mentioned that there's a meeting, community meeting scheduled for March 9th at 6:30, but I haven't yet received any more information about where that will be, and I wasn't sure if that had been scheduled yet.
I have not yet either.
But they're working it out, but they don't, they don't, they don't do people count.
But they intend that to still be on March 9th?
I'm sorry?
They still intend for the same date, March 9th? Okay. People will be able to look there when that is up.
Let me just know something. Excuse me, excuse me.
Yes, please.
Let me know why we're there. We, and I always just want to say this, council has to be conscious in terms of attending these neighborhood meetings and issues like that in terms of, of how many of us attend it and the input we have, because ultimately, things like that come to our desk, and so I just wanted to make sure council is aware of that, of attending these neighborhood meetings.
Thank you, and I'll try to be quick on the rest of them. I have a letter in front of me, and I don't know if the clerk only put this in my packet because I asked for things, or if it's in everyone's packet that came from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board dated February 10th. I just asked that we refer that to whatever needs to be done so that can be considered in the future. Is the Parks and Rec Board meeting tonight, or did they cancel the meeting? Did you let them know that we've accepted this, and I asked that this be added to the minutes and a copy be put in there? The, the fourth was, I understand, I think that the audit committee meeting might be moving from March 1st, and I just wasn't sure if that has been announced or if that's not occurring from March 1st to March 22nd?
The audit, well...
Yeah, there is a, there is a meeting, and I asked in the email that if it is moving, that that just be shared publicly.
And I'm sure it will be when, when he confirms that it has actually moved.
Okay, so we don't yet know if that is moving. And then my last item relates to the discussion of proposed curfews, so I'll wait for that to occur.
All right, well, we're done. Okay, well, we'll go to the next item, which is the discussion of comments received by the mayor relating to Section 221-5, City Code Curfew for Person 16 Years or Younger. Let me say that all of y'all have got my information, and I think I shared some other information with you regarding the curfews. My purpose, you know, for doing that is that recently, within the last six to days, we've had at least six juveniles that were wounded by gun violence in our city. And many of, one of them, I, I had a chance to, to visit in hospital when he was fighting for his life, and it was just six. And then I think most recently, because I'm losing count, the numbers go up so fast, I lose count, there was a juvenile who was a perpetrator in an event, or at least has been accused of an event. So my focus is, is that let's try to get a hold of this while we can. It's really, my focus is protection, so these young people would not get caught. And the thing that I emphasize is, we're living in a different environment than we did 10, 15 years ago, and if you are out walking the streets in, in, in certain areas in this city, that you run the risk of, of getting, getting harmed by gun violence. So I just thought that, and I felt it was appropriate, that we do something to stem that tide, and I then, since then, I found out that we had an ordinance already on the books that we look at, that we could, we could do. We haven't, hadn't been used in a while, but I thought that was important. And then as I talked with my colleague, Ms. Moon and I, because a lot of these things occur in neighborhoods we're familiar with or right around where we live, we thought it'd be a good idea to have a community meeting, have a public, public meeting where citizens can come and talk about this public hearing. So we want to put that on the table, but I don't want to be all summer doing this because what concerns me is, right now, we're in January and February, it may not feel like it, we, you know, there's a lot of things that's happening with our young people, and I'm saying, lo and behold, what's gonna happen in April, May, June, July, when it gets hot? So I just want to think that we need to consider as a council doing something to try to stem the tide of this and let young people know, and let their parents know that we're trying to prevent things from happening with our young people, for them actually getting involved, but also the danger that happening out there because everybody's got guns and, and people are just, it seems, I'm just concerned with the number of people that have been involved in gun activity, either by victims or being perpetrators themselves with guns. So that's where we are. You all have gotten that, that information on that, and I just want to get your thoughts and, and, and the manager and I talked about that, and maybe if we would have, do we want to look at that, have a meet, have a public hearing first, then come back and, and make a decision, or do you just want to, you know, we can go for the dice? What are your thoughts?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I actually suggested that we do go to the community some time ago and get their thoughts on that. And I think it would be appropriate if we were to have the public hearing, assess what the community feels or what they think should happen because it directly impacts them, and then have further discussion from council after the public hearing.
All right, will we do the public hearing here or out in the community?
I would suggest out in the community. We don't have very much success with, with folks coming down to municipal building with the parking and everything. Perhaps one of the, the main libraries or Melrose or Wimsom Road, one of the libraries that has accommodations large enough to accommodate 50, 60 people.
Might I suggest more than one?
I would suggest, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I would suggest, piggybacking on what Councilmember Whiteboy is saying, I would just suggest, because you don't know how many people you may get, I would suggest because, at least having two. One in the southwest side, which will be at, like at the high school. One could be at Patrick Henry and one could be at Fleming. And that way, you're getting both sides so no one can say that they did not have an opportunity. And then, if you want to, you could have one here on our, on our regular scheduled public hearing night.
I, and I, you know, I've talked about that and I somewhat agree with that. But my concern is time.
Time, that's what I'm saying. It could be next month. It, you know, in March, if that's what we're looking at. Time and, time is of the essence. And so I would say next month, look at a date of having back, back-to-back weeks. But I think it needs to be done. The sooner the better.
And just down in the southeast because they're having some of the challenges as well.
Right, but I was just trying to look at a venue. That's why I was looking at the schools for convenience and parking, et cetera.
All right, could we do that? How could we, would we do that?
That's a meeting.
Yeah.
You can pull that up. I work with the city clerk. If council wishes to do that, we'll look at how to schedule that. And then our next meeting in March, what we can do is then follow the normal procedure for establishing those type of special meetings.
Okay.
Any other thoughts?
And so the content that I guess would be considered in this is we could just provide a copy of the current curfew ordinance as it stands and ask for feedback on updates to that.
Yes, and with council's permission, I can work with the city manager and our police chief to review that and that way obtain any input that the chief might have about changes that he believes might help as we're also hearing from citizens.
Yes, I like that.
May I make a comment, Mayor Lee?
Yes, sir.
I'll just say broadly, I don't support the idea or enforcement of a curfew. I think that it, it criminalizes a person for an existence of their age and where they exist and no other reason. I understand that's not always how it's been applied in the past recently, that it seems to be more a secondary offense that's being put on our youth when they're apprehended potentially for another crime. But with all that said, I do think that there are positive updates that can be made to this section. And since it seems like it could potentially be the will of this council to make some changes that I may not be happy with, I hope that some of the positive changes could at least be visited in a way that would be beneficial to everyone in the long run. Certain things like, right now, I believe it would be an officer's discretion to give a warning. Some other localities formalize what a warning process would be. The first time you get a warning with a letter sent home to your parents. And then the second time.
I just think, don't you think that that would be more appropriate, to do that after we've had discussion and come back when we have discussion as council to give your input? I think it's kind of premature to do that prior to even having any discussion about where we are and what the ordinance would look like. That's just my opinion.
Well, I'm offering my opinion on what the ordinance was, which was the request of us when this was initially brought up at our first meeting of council. And they did solicit our feedback, which has been emailed to him. But I don't believe that my thoughts have been shared with the rest of council. And so prior to this even going out into a community meeting and at least offering some of my base thoughts and input and immense amount of research into this from when it's been amended in the 90s and again in the 2000s. Those are just some positive things that might be considered. So if it is the will of council ultimately to do something that I may not be thrilled with, that's more restrictive in terms of curfew, I hope that we'll look at the whole ordinance to see what are some positive changes that might be made.
Oh. Vice Mayor.
I was just going to suggest too, and this maybe could be, this input could be... I've lost my ability to speak. Gauged or included from the public as we're looking at this issue, particularly around safety and protection, are there ideas that the public has that maybe aren't enforcement-based but are additional service-based? And, and the reason I ask that is because when we look at the value and the prevention and intervention work that's been done through extended hours at the libraries, through the Parks and Recreation programming, that's proving to be very effective. But that only goes to a certain time in the evenings. So I would love to hear from the public their thoughts on, you know, are there other ways we can address this alongside enforcement?
Yes, I agree with you, Mr. Cobb. And I think that would be the impetus for the public meetings and how important it is to actually hear from
Both end.
our residents and the parents, get their input. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Yes, sir.
I just want to concur with Ms., with Ms. Moon and having the two meetings at the two high schools because that way we'll get everybody's input. Kids from the southeast could go to Patrick Henry if they choose or Fleming. So I think that would be a good place to start.
Well, I agree. I don't, go ahead, Mr. Pretty.
Final point that I'm related to, I believe this topic has come up because of all the violence that we're seeing that's happening locally. And something that I've asked the city attorney to consider looking at as it relates to this topic is the enforcement of our discharging of firearms and how that relates. Just recently, there was a situation where four guns were found at a mall in Lynchburg. And one of them was an airsoft gun that was made to resemble an AR-15. And upon looking at our code, we only make it a class four misdemeanor for discharging a pneumatic gun. But we have the ability to make it a class three misdemeanor. We should be moving that penalty up to the maximum amount that's at least allowed under code, potentially seeking new enforcement measures at the state level.
Well, that's part of the discussion. That's part of what we do.
And I'll take those comments, Mr. Mayor, as we go and I'll work with the city manager and the police chief just for preliminary purposes, look at that, take the input that we receive from these special meetings, and then finally, we'll have that. But I think that it's very appropriate for me to take those comments to the police chief and city manager and talk about it. Are there changes that we can make? Same, in the same manner that we're also working together on code enforcement issues currently.
Well, I agree.
City manager staff's been very proactive in that as we're starting to move forward.
All right, well, thank you. And let me just say, we're talking about lives here, folks. Life and death.
Yes.
Think about that in terms of life and death. I saw this young man that was fighting to live with tubes running all through him. And he was shot going to the convenience store, which was less than a block from where he lived. And, and so that's why I want to do everything we can to get the public's opinion. But I don't want to sit on this. I want us to go ahead and make some decisions because I'm afraid of what it looks like now could look like in the spring and summer with this. And this is really, I think, my focus is, is protect the young people. Because whether we realize it or not, and I will just say it, I mean, we can't just keep dodging the bullet. In Northwest, it's actually dangerous to be walking at night. And, and, and a lot of parents saying, hey, if Johnny is out, nothing's good going to happen. That's what they used to tell me. Nothing good happens at 12 o'clock. Matter of fact, I was a grown man. I'm still hearing that, nothing good happening at 12 o'clock, but after 12. So that's what I want to do. And I think we, I want to let our public know we're just not sitting on our hands while all this stuff is happening. And so I'm very much appreciative of your thoughts. And whatever we hear, we can bring that up at the meeting and just have to let the public come in and maybe give us something that we haven't heard before. So I think that's a, it's a good idea. So thank you, Tim, for your work. And if you can guide us through this so we can have a public hearing, one at Fleming and another one at PH the night or the day before, the next week, or something along those lines, we'll be there. We can do it. Thank you, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. No vacancies on certain boards or authorities at this point. I don't think, do we need to talk about the, we've already voted on the empowerment committee. We've gotten that down. All right, so we will be in recess for closed meeting and closed meetings. And thereafter, we will reconvene here at 7:00 tonight. Okay, thank you all.